Evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 16th, 2023 meeting of the planning board. We do have one alternate member who will be here any minute, but we're going to get started. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Everybody's had a chance to look those over. They incorporate the minutes we skipped at the last meeting?
Do you want them individually or all together? Do you want them individually or all together?
If nobody has any comments, you want to do them all together?
I'd make a motion that we approve both all of the December 15th, 2022, January 19th, 2023, January 30th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Determination of completeness, we have the request of One Market Square LLC for property at One Congress Street for site plan approval for partial demolition expansion of existing structure to construct a three-story mixed-use building of 58,780 square feet of gross floor area, 12,080 square feet of building footprint, 13 parking spaces and associated onsite and offsite improvements. This is plan ready for acceptance is complete?
Second.
Is there a motion?
No. I'll make a motion that we've voted to run that the application is complete according to the site plan regulations and to accept the application for consideration.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Basically accepted. Public hearings, we have a request again to, from Liberty Mutual to postpone property at 225 Borthwick Avenue requesting a wetlands conditional use permit under section 101017. This project's a shoreline stabilization work for two existing ponds onsite with erosion impacts, et cetera. They have again requested a postponement. Have a motion to postpone?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me? Do we get to say a comment in there?
I'm sorry, I should have asked you. I didn't think it would be. But you can comment now.
I'd just like to say that I would prefer to have an actual reason. Like, it says, "We are still held up." And I see the previous, you know, request for extension from January, but to me, it's not really very clear. Like, what's the reason for holding them?
They're working on their state wetland permit, and so they've been held up with that process, so they want?
It's the state permits?
Yeah.
Because it said state permits and design plans by our engineer.
Right, so one of the conditions of the approval for the Concom was to get the state wetland permit, and they had to do a plan, so I guess they're still working on that plan.
Okay.
There can also be an iteration with the state, depending on their comments, that plan might need to change to adapt to those comments, so.
I mean, I just would like to see it a little bit more specific than, "We are still held up." That's my only comment. Thank you.
We have the One Congress Street also coming up as public hearing. I'd like to consider a motion, take it out of order, and bring it now on the agenda if folks are so inclined.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Who's here to present for request of One Market Square? I'll read it again. LLC owner for property at One Congress Street requesting site plan approval for the partial demolition expansion of an existing structure to construct a three-story mixed-use building with 58,780 square feet of gross floor area, 12,080 square feet of building footprint, 13 parking spaces associated onsite and offsite improvements. This property is on assessors map 117 lot 14 and lies in character districts four or CD4, character district five, CD5, the downtown overlay, and historic districts. Who is here to present for this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, John Shagnon from Ambid Engineering. Also here tonight is our architect Tracy Kozak, landscape architect Terrence Parker, developer Mark McNabb, and some of his team, and counsel FX Bruton. The project is tax map 117, lots 14 and 15, known as One Congress Street. Proposal is to construct a three-story mixed-use building. A little background, in February of 2022, the two lots that comprise the development area were merged. The zoning line, though, between CD4 and CD5 still remains and is located in the area or on the line that used to be the dividing line between the two properties. We came to the planning board and did a design review. That was completed in April of 2022. Subsequently, the project went through other approvals. The Historic District Commission approved it in August of 2022, and the Technical Advisory Committee approved it January of this year. Three conditions from the Technical Advisory Committee were carried forward or met with the submission you have before you. Subsequent condition is that offsite improvements are worked out with the appropriate bodies. The developer is excited to propose improvements to High Street, Fleet Street, Haven Court, and Lad Street. This approval here tonight, though, of the onsite improvements will get that process started, so there is a site plan that can then be built upon, and the street improvements can go through a public process, just as other street improvements do. The street improvements are not germane in a sense of needed for the project. The developer is committed, but we ask for the site plan approval of the onsite facilities and improvements proposed here tonight before we move into that second phase of the public process of offsite improvements. In your submission package, we have a traffic memorandum. You should find that in your submission. It shows that the development would only add 13 morning peak trips to the network, and otherwise, there would be reductions in parking trip generation based on the change of use. The parking meets the, onsite parking meets the zoning requirements. It's shown and talked about in the memorandum and also on sheet C6 of the site plan set. The details of the calculations and the layout of the parking spaces is included. Also, there's a green building statement, an average grade plane calculation sheet, some lighting information. Lighting is at this time proposed to be along the building with the cut sheets that you have in the package. Currently, the pole-mounted streetlights are in a sidewalk that doesn't provide appropriate clearance for city plows, and so the developer has agreed to move and shift that lighting to on-building lighting, and the Department of Public Works has agreed. There's a drainage analysis that's also included. The site development plans show the demolition that's associated with the project. Some of the structures along High Street, sort of the rear of One Congress, will be removed to make way for the new building, which is shown on the site plan. The parking that is at grade will be lowered and be below level, below first-floor parking, and that will be, the basement is parking other utility functions. The first floor is proposed as retail, second floor is office with residential uses on the upper floors. There's some landscape plantings shown on Haven Court. That's sort of the next part of the plan set, of the landscape plans. We're going to be redoing sidewalks on the development side of High Street and putting in a new sidewalk along the back and the rear of the structure that will connect to Haven Court. For the utilities, new sewer and water are being proposed for High Street, and the building will connect to those. For grading, there's no major changes to the grading, except in the back where the walkway will be elevated so that it will pitch out to Haven Court. But one of the major improvements of the site plan is that we've added some catch basins in High Street. High Street is really flat at this time, and so it does tend to puddle immediately after rainstorms, so we're extending some drainage, which includes catch basins at street level to help to mitigate that issue. Also in the plan set is the detail of the lower-level parking showing where the spaces are. That's pretty much the plan in a nutshell, and if there isn't any other site questions at this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Tracy Kozak to talk a little bit about the building and the HTC process, and then Terrence Parker to talk about any landscaping issues that you might see or want to hear about, and then back to us for questions and final wrap-up.
Sure, Cheryl. Proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have one quick site question. You mentioned earlier that you're seeking only site plan approval tonight, correct?
We're seeking site plan approval for the onsite development, yes.
So, none of your proposed offsite improvements are required for the approval, and I was just trying to understand, is this something the applicant is donating to the city, or is he obligated to do this, or how's that all work into the project?
So, there are some onsite, offsite improvements in High Street relative to utility infrastructure that are shown on the plans and are a part of this approval. We did come to the board in the design concept phase with, you know, a wider project including offsite improvements. We still want to do that, but in order to proceed, we need to get the site onsite plan approved, and then Mark will probably want to speak to that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, I'm Mark McNabb. To answer your question specifically, none of the improvements that are going to be betterments to city property are required for this project. The site plan today is a standalone project with the utilities, drainage, building necessary to meet the code and pass TAC to go forward. It's my desire to give something that long outlasts me, and I'd like to rebuild High Street and Lad Street and Haven Court with even walking surfaces, cat and mary lights, landscaping improvements. I think if I improve that whole area, it provides a connection to other things happening in the city, and maybe we don't see that much where somebody comes forward willing to make that kind of improvement, but I've done the same thing in Brick Market, and I just believe in that. It'll be $2 to $3 million to rebuild the city streets and do that, and it's a lengthy process. We thought it was all going to happen last year. We worked on it hard last year with staff, with, met at one point the planning board there, but it was, but it got complicated, and it turned out that based on lots of reasons that probably we're all familiar with and read about, that it needed to be an open book with the community to talk about what those streets want to look like, because we envision them like the music hall or the burying ground, you know, very high-quality granite, walking. But it was determined that the city would prefer us to really address it in public hearings with the public on what they'll look like, those betterments that aren't needed for our project, that are, let's call them beautification projects. That's really what they are. And that seemed to make sense. Took us a year to get through to that, to know that that's really the advice of TAC was separate this out, and then go your route with public hearings, with the staff, with the council. Ultimately, all those parties have to buy in. So that's the uniqueness of these improvements that we refer to as city improvements. This project has the offsite improvements, though, that are necessary for the building, the sewer lines, the water lines, the electric. That's all part of your package. So that's why we've broken it this way. TAC thought that would be the best way to do it. For our end, we recognize, you know, it'll probably be a six-month to a year process. It's significant money, you know, and we needed to make sure and know that the actual project we have is approved and real. I am committed, though, to making those improvements, and I'm committed to paying 100% of them. I'm not looking for any involvement from the city, not design fees, not sharing costs. I'm representing to rebuild High Street, Lad Street, and Haven Court to Fleet Street as a city improvement, subject to the city's approval, though, you know, if the city decides, or the council decides they don't want that ultimately, you know, that won't happen, but it won't because of me. I'm committed to that. I'm committed to seeing Haven Court connect to Fleet. I think it'll be wonderful. So that's the explanation of why they're too separate. We were asked to really do it that way.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I think the applicant wanted to have us hold our questions till everybody made their presentation, not you, just for me, but we appreciate your, you're filling in the details and the offer, but if we can wait for the rest of the team to present, then we can ask questions about all aspects of the plan.
Thank you, and good evening, Chairman and members of the planning board. Tracy Kozak with Archov Architects, here to talk about the building. As previously mentioned, it was approved by HTC last August. This is a new addition to the back of an existing historic building circa 1900, and it is mixed-use. As mentioned, first floor retail, second floor office. The upper two floors are 18 residential apartments total, varying from studio, one bedroom, and two bedrooms. There's one level of underground parking, and that's kind of the summary. The new building in the back will be clad with, on the bottom, with granite, and the upper floors are a terracotta tile with a natural finish, and the roof is copper with some glazing in between buttresses, glazed corner, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, I think, I thought you guys wanted to do your whole team presentation, but maybe I misunderstood.
All right, so now we'll move on to landscape design.
Good evening. Terrence Parker, Terra Furman Landscape Architecture. My presentation could be even briefer than Tracy's because there is a small strip of landscape on the north end of the building that will work in concert with the offsite improvements that Mark alluded to before, because most of my work is really the offsite improvements that go from Fleet all the way to the intersection of High and Lad, and as Mark said, a lot of those offsite will replicate some of the work that we did at Chestnut Street some years ago. So, for the most part, you can see in this plan that there's a small green strip of foundation plantings on the north side will be primarily ornamental shade-tolerant plants that can handle city conditions. There'll be some porous pavement that goes down to the alley on the west side of the building that will have temporary planters as well, movable planters, and that's really it for the onsite improvements of, in relationship to the landscape architecture portion.
Thank you. Now, questions from the team?
Yes, Jane?
Yeah, actually, my first question is about landscape. I kept looking at it, understanding that there's offsite landscape that really doesn't have to do with the onsite application that we're looking at tonight, but on page 231 of our meeting packet, there is a picture of the building from Congress Street, and it has a tree in front of the old historic building, like on that corner.
That's the existing tree.
And what is going to happen to the existing tree?
Nothing. Yeah.
It's going to stay?
Yeah.
Fabulous. That was my first question.
Beautiful tree.
Great, thank you. That was my landscape question. Thank you. And then, I just wanted to understand the parking, because in the summary that we have, it keeps saying 13 parking spaces, but then I clearly see that the basement parking is 23 parking spaces. So, could you just clarify that?
Sure, it's 23 parking spaces.
Right, and I was going to comment on that, that the description in the agenda had 13, but it should be 23.
So, oh, it's a typo or something? Okay.
And they're required to have 22.
Right, I understood. Okay, thank you, thank you. And then, I went and stood outside those buildings, actually, and I just wondered if the actual facade facing Congress Street is going to change, or if that's going to be preserved, because it has, it says chess club. It actually has, not engraved, but embossed, if you can do embossing to brick. It's got like a raised lettering that seemed very historic to me. Is that a condition by the Historic District Commission, or?
Very observant to see that. The HTC actually didn't comment on the chess club lettering, because it's way, way, way up high and very tiny, but I'm glad you noticed it. We're not planning to remove that. We are, it is a full restoration of the corner building, the brick building with the brownstone. It needs a lot of attention. A lot of the brownstone has begun to spall. The mortar joints are missing in a lot of places. It just needs some care and attention. The first-floor original storefront was removed mid-century. That will be restored to the original condition based on historic photos. The fire escapes are proposed to be removed, and there is one window at the far end on High Street, which used to be a door. We're going to make that a door again, and that's pretty much it for the corner building. The building to the left, which is three Congress Street, has a bit more attention to it. We are adding a dormer to the attic level, and we're also restoring the storefront at Street slightly different than the very original photos. The original historic photos showed one door on one side. We're going to have two doors, but other than that, it's very similar. And the second-floor windows are being restored to how they were around circa 1920. They were a little, this building is older, it's 1860, so we're not going all the way back to day one, but we're going kind of halfway back on those windows, keeping the same openings that are there now. So that was the discussion with the HTC that they came to agree on that direction.
But you're going to keep all the historic words? I don't know what?
Oh, the lettering, yeah, and there's even more. On the sign band above the corner building- And there's even more on the sign band above the corner building. It's Mechanics Bank, carbon and granite. That will stay.
Yes. I couldn't remember what I, I did read that. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cool. I think that that's important. And then my last question is about windows. I just want to understand, so as you're walking down Ladd Street outside the building and on the sidewalk, are, is there an overhang? Not awnings, but is there an actual overhang?
Well, there are awnings on High and Congress of different natures, depending on which building they are. And then there's no overhang. There's just, you know, the normal gutter and roof.
So I don't know what, I can't remember what view it was, but I think it may be in the rooftop view. It shows a whole set of windows down Ladd Street, but those are like literally part of the building of the top floor. They're not like windows of an overhang. Is that right? Pretty sure it's the.
There was a very, a much earlier version that had a, a drive under along High Street, but that is changed and it's storefront windows along the facade. There is the back corner, which protrudes out on the upper level. So that is a little bit of an overhang right on the corner.
Okay. Yeah, I see it from that picture, actually.
That's the back facing Newbury's.
Yeah, yeah. But I just thought there was something along that Ladd Street, but I see in that picture there's not. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. It's on the, what is this view? It's, okay, I just totally lost it. Never mind. That's okay. I'm pretty sure it was the rooftop view. Yeah, that one. What are the, what are the windows that are?
Yep. They're sky windows. They're glazing. They're, they're kind of skylights. They're on the angle of the roof. They're ganged in three between the buttresses.
And so they, they're just seen within that top story?
They're, they're skylights in a very steep roof pitch.
Okay.
So from street level, because the streets are so narrow, you don't really see them when you're on the street. You might be able to see them if you're far, far away, maybe at the end of Ladd Street. Or if you're on the top floor of the garage, you could certainly see them.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. So I got several questions and I guess I'll, this might be an architectural question, but maybe not. So the cars kind of coming and going and conflicting with pedestrians, you know, obviously we're not redoing Haven Court just yet, but even so, obviously cars are going to have to make a pretty good swing coming into the, the building to get in the elevator. So how do you guys see that playing out under real time?
Well, I'll let John speak to this in more detail, but as far as the architecture, we made the entrance into the garage door wider, about a third wider than it needs to be if you were just coming straight in. So that allows for a little more of a turning radius and for traffic patterns. I'll let John speak to that.
So Haven Court currently and in the future is used as the primary delivery access for the Newbury's building. So there is traffic that goes up to the Newbury's building, up Haven Court. There will be traffic in the future. There will be this traffic, too, that is entering the garage and there will be pedestrians there, too. So it's just going to be something that will be dealt with as in other situations that sort of where there's some mingling of, of types of traffic. The good thing is that nobody's going fast because you have to take the corner at High Street. So there will be, there won't, it's not a street that sees through traffic. It's a dead end. So the only people really that use it are going to be the people that live in the building and so are very familiar with it, or the delivery people that go to J.J. Newbury's building.
Do you see signage at the end of, maybe there already is signage, but signage at the end of Haven Court, just no through street, local traffic only, delivery only, kind of just so people don't drive down there and then get stuck?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. I don't think there's signage there now. People sort of, I think, and they, when they look at it, they, they don't go down there. But that's probably a good idea in the future to, to think about some sort of signage because if they see people turning into the garage, they might be tempted to follow them. So that's probably not a bad idea.
Okay, great. And then do you see the, the parking in the basement? Is it, I see it's like stacked parking. Is it per unit or is it going to be a valet system?
The stacked parking, those two spaces will be assigned to one unit.
Okay.
As required.
And then in the, in the alleyway, I know from what I recall, it's not a fire access alleyway, I don't believe, or anything like that. But I see there's, you know, you have bike racks in the middle of the alleyway. There's also the gas meters on the corner. Is that going to conflict with any safety stuff going on in that area? I just want to confirm that that wasn't, you know, the separation between this building and the adjacent building is just kind of a, I guess, owner's preference, so to speak.
Sure. So the primary, primarily that rear alley is to provide light and air to both buildings and to provide egress. I don't even know if it needs to be there for egress, but it's primary light and air. And the fire department would not need to get over there as a fully sprinkled building. They are, they did put in the, at the TAC committee meeting, they talked about High Street and the potential improvements to High Street, providing better access for fire safety. And they would be very happy with that, but they did not talk or need any other access to provide for life safety.
Okay. Chairman, I have a couple more. All right, thank you. And then just, I guess, moving on to a couple other topics. So I saw stormwater, looks like it's slightly higher flows post-construction. And I know you're doing filtration on the downspouts from the roof drains coming into the catch basins. Did you guys look into onsite detention or anything trying to, I guess, hold some of that water back before it enters into the stormwater system?
So the plan was, that part of the plan was developed before we decided to make the back alley porous. So I believe when we reanalyze based on that, the peaks are going to go away and we're going to match the existing runoff.
Okay. Great. And I know, so because we've kind of changed the way heights are measured, particularly in this urban environment, and I believe the height was measured based on the old requirement, is that, I guess, my question being, with the new requirements, does the height still all work, work out for this current zoning?
So I'm not sure about the answer to that question. I just know that we went through the process of design review. So the height is based on that older ordinance and it works with that ordinance?
That's true because it's based on the design review.
Is your question, does it, would it conform to the current one? Is that, is that your question?
Yeah, yeah. But since.
Do you know the answer to that question?
We did, in fact, update the drawings you have here to reflect the current and it does comply. It is a hip to top mansard and the average grade plane is for the whole building based on the current ordinance. And it's well below the maximum.
Right. And they were vested back at the end of design review anyways. So, okay. Can I answer my own question? All right, thank you.
Any other questions, the applicant? And just a quick break. Mr. Simonas has joined us. Mr. Simonas should be sitting for Mr. Mahana tonight, who's out of the country.
Excellent. Apologies for my tardiness.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I don't have a question for the applicant, but I do have a question that's a process question embedded in our meeting packet. It's not for the applicant. Should I ask it now or later?
Well, I guess we need to hear what it is.
Okay. Because at the top of page nine in our meeting packet, it, it's part of the TAC review. So, and it's that separation of the onsite improvements from the off-site improvements that we discussed earlier. And it says that TAC will review the off-site improvements before seeking approval from the city council. And I'm just wondering, isn't the planning, doesn't the planning board still get a chance to review the off-site improvements?
No, the planning board will just review what it's reviewing tonight. The off-site improvements are a council matter.
It'll go, it'll go directly from the TAC to the city council?
And they may not, I'm not even sure if they have to go to TAC for that. It's, it's improvements on city property, so.
It was, in the TAC process, it was recommended that they come back to TAC to get input from city staff on the off-site improvements because they're going to be significant utility work and grading and stuff. And then TAC would provide input to the city council when they go to city council.
So if we want to see what the off-site plan is, we have to attend the city council meeting?
Or the TAC meeting.
Or the TAC meeting. Okay.
There is a request in the packet for a waiver of license fees for the off-site improvements. That's not something we can approve, but we could make a recommendation to council if, if the board is so inclined. So. Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just to clarify Jane's question, the reason why the planning board doesn't have purview over the on-street improvements is because it's municipal property. Is that how that works? And technically, all municipal property projects do not have to come to planning board?
Municipal property for municipal services does not have to come to this board.
Okay.
And public streets are municipal services.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant or me or anybody else before we open the public hearing? Open the public hearing? Is anybody here to speak too far against this application?
Elizabeth Bratter, property owner, 159 McDonough Street. I have been following this since the, I think, the very beginning. I might have missed one meeting out of all of them and I did go to all the HTC, all the TAC. I was definitely, I'm sure I might be mugged on the way home, but it's okay. They did a wonderful job trying to maintain the Congress Street look. They put some modern things in the back as you come out of the parking garage, which are kind of the welcome to the city. They tried to maintain the look. There's a view that you can see as you come out of the parking garage of the North Church, which is absolutely beautiful at night. They tried to maintain that. So they've been through the wringer, so to speak, and I think they've done a good job of trying to make changes as they've been requested. I've always found that every development that I follow starts out with a certain look and at the end, we've only been able to modify a little of it. And that's kind of my goal is I like to see things become more compatible with the city, at least from my perspective. And I think they did a nice job. The front is, like I said, it maintains that historical look. They're preserving a lot of it. The back has some modern aspects. They fixed some drainage issues in the back. I especially was watching it because of the parking and they did, they were able to fix any parking issues that were originally there. They did some nice stuff on the top. I believe solar panels are up there. Yes. There's solar panels up there, something you don't see too often. A lot of projects are nice and square. This project has a real mansard roof, something that is typical of downtown. So I, all in all, at this point in the game, after having done this for a long time and complained about a lot of things, I think they should be passed. I think they did a nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Schultz with Port City Realty Group. I am management for Pierce Block Condos. It's a direct to butter. We start, our building starts on Market Street a little bit before Starbucks wraps around down High Street and then continues around, around Ladd Street. We're excited for the new building, obviously. It's going to be a great improvement for the backend. We are just, there's a couple of points that we just want to make sure that either one, we're notified or two, just bring to light. That High Street and Ladd Street become very tight during construction, i.e. the garage. And we have a lot of patrons coming from Starbucks all the way around to the backside, which are doctors' offices up on the fourth floor. So we are concerned of, just, you know, preliminarily concerned of road closures, construction where, where there is a lot of foot traffic coming and going. With the underground garage, we're obviously concerned, I know this will be brought up later, if there is any blasting to be done for, for the garage. I don't know if there, there is or if there was any testing done, but I think our, our point is we just want to try to be kept up to speed and for the board to consider us because of the mass of our building and how tight it gets down there. But we're very happy for the, for the Mr. McNabb's new building. And I was happy to hear tonight regarding the, the improvements of the water drainage, that back area of High, Ladd and Haven Court are very flat, very, a lot of water just accumulates there and the sewer system, just drainage system's not, not adequate. But I will mention that if there are some improvements, we may, on Ladd Street, we might want to look at the, the sidewalk because people actually walk on the road, not the sidewalk, because it's such at an incline that it's actually dangerous to walk on. And to have this beautiful building erected and, and have that old sidewalk still there seems to be, wouldn't fit proper after everything's done. But we're very excited for the building. But I just wanted to bring forth, you know, the light of how many people we have coming and going in this building, especially they park downtown and walk down High and walk down Ladd Street. And so we're concerned about, you know, just construction. Maybe there's a, a construction plan or, or something that might be available to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Petra Huda, 280 South Street. I also have been following this project all along. And tonight, in reading the, the project background, I was a little confused as to the timing on all of the approvals here. It says the applicant was before the board in April 21st, 2022, originally proposed as a hotel. The current proposal is mixed-use building with retail restaurant on the first floor and, and everything else. So my question is, as you go down further, the project review discussion and recommendations, historic district, technical advisory, it says the project was approved. So these were done in August of '22 and January of '23. So my question is, which project was approved and viewed by these boards at that time? It's not really clear to me how, how this process works and which one was, was approved. As, I, I don't, I'm not speaking for or against, I'm just wondering what kind of process we have here as far as which project you're, you're actually looking at. So that would be my question. And then on the other side is, when you added the conditions, the conditions in the back that were added by the, the other boards, if this was the other project, then are we really satisfying the conditions here? I, I don't know who's, who's supposed to answer that, but as a resident, I was confused on somebody, as somebody who's, who is following this and by what's in here. So, thank you.
I'll try a little bit on that. Just, the projects can evolve as, as they go through the process and they get revised reports along the way to TAC, so.
Well, I can tell you that the project that's before you tonight is what was recommended from TAC and the Historic District. is what was recommended from TAC and the historic district.
So I think the confusion is, in looking at all the evidence, Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickery now, sorry, Rick, or Chairman, and looking at all the evidence, it was looked at as a hotel. And I guess with Mr. McNabb being so giving tonight, as we heard earlier, maybe we could look at some low-income housing since we are looking at housing. And I guess I'm taken back a little bit that that hasn't been brought up. If we're, but the reason it hadn't been brought up before was because we were looking at a hotel. So I would encourage us to really think about and look at the project as it goes through the system. The other thing I noticed is that I didn't see demolition, any of it going to the demolition committee. And I'm kind of asking this committee, does it need to go to the demolition committee? It is losing part of an old structure. And I heard tonight from the team that it's just, you know, back there, well, we're keeping a McIntyre building that's only a little over 50 years. So I guess I would want to know, if we're demolishing some part of the project, then I would ask that it go through the committee. And as we know, there's pictures that need to be taken and all that kind of thing. So those are some questions that I had for the project. But if we're really looking at a change where we're going to have units for rent or condos after we get to the second level of the business, then have we looked at some options since there was some requests to change things around? I know we changed our zoning for the project, but what else did we change? So I appreciate if we could have some kind of feedback on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? We have two people on Zoom, I think.
Would anyone on the Zoom call like to make any comments? No one raised their hand.
Would the applicant like to respond to any of the, during the public comment?
Sure, Tracy Kozak. Just to clarify, the demolition was thoroughly vetted by HDC. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding with the demolition committee is if there is a project in the city which is demolished, which is not within the ordinance or under review of HDC, then it goes to the committee. But in this case, the HDC fully evaluated and discussed and voted on the demolition that is presented here. Building use, it was originally proposed to be a hotel, and it was the upper, well, the program was revised to what you see here tonight quite a while ago. And all, as was mentioned, the TAC approval and the HDC approval are exactly what you see here tonight.
Thank you.
Just one last note that the planning department recommendations and condition of approval are acceptable to the applicant. We appreciate your review and the city's review of the project and the time spent to make it the best project it can be. So are there any other parts of the project that need explanation or other questions before we wrap up?
Well, I think I spoke out of turn. We're not supposed to be asking questions now, but we're talking about changing our rules, which might allow that sort of thing. But we can't right now, so thank you very much.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to address something you had brought up before. I wouldn't have if you didn't bring it up, on the license fees in public ways on High Street and Lad Street. And I understand that this board doesn't approve that, but could provide a recommendation. And I just wanted to make sure nobody took that the wrong way because the reason that will be in our request as we go further down the road is because this is not asking for matching money from the city of Portsmouth or any money to redo all the streets. And it's all at our expense. We just kind of felt it was a little bit of a rub to then turn around and pay a license fee to encumber High Street and Lad Street and Haven Court to spend $2 to $3 million to improve them. So it was just a fair play question that, and that's the difference. We wouldn't ask for any fees to be waived on our project, on the main project. But that's where that came from, in case anyone had any confusion of why, as we propose all these improvements in the street, those license agreements to make those improvements in the street, to close those streets, regrade them, eliminate sidewalks, all new hard surfaces, is extensive. And the fees can be extensive per the license agreement. So I just wanted to give the backstory of why, as we go down that process, we'll be asking the council that, because we're not asking for any money from the city, that we would appreciate not having to then also pay the license fees for doing that work.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to speak, either here or on Zoom? And nobody else, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board discussion?
I just have a question, Mr. Chair.
That's all right.
On condition 2.2, the construction management and mitigation plan, Peter, do you mind kind of going over what that would entail? And would that also include a traffic and safety plan as part of that?
Right, that will include how they're going to load the site, you know, with construction deliveries. And the abutters will be involved in that process. Fire and police and all of, and Public Works will be. They will all be involved in that process. So it handles pedestrian safety, things like that.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to clarify, the planning board doesn't have the authority to waive utility fees, do we? That's the city council?
We can only make a recommendation.
A recommendation, okay. That's what I thought, huh?
Andrew. Again, I apologize for being late. And a clerical question on the note that Jim just made. Should this project be approved? And should we make a recommendation to the city council? And subsequently, they accept that where the developer will fund the changes to the public way? In the event that something happens, whether it's economical or some turn of events where the developer can no longer fulfill the promise to change that, again, economical or what have you, what happens then?
Well, I think I need to clarify that. If I misspeak, the board can ask you to speak again, but the public hearing is actually closed. So we've got, what's before us is not those offsite improvements. What's before us is the plan on, that's up there on the screen.
Sure.
And that, if, you know, there could be surety involved with that. If you have a concern about that, anything specific to the plan that we have authority over, those are issues on our table. We can make a recommendation for the adjacent offsite improvements, which I personally support making that recommendation to waive those fees because I think it's a tremendous benefit to the city and a tremendous gift that's being offered. So I think we should try to take advantage of that, if the city can. But that's separate. So this project is not contingent on that. And that is not contingent on this.
Sure.
That may not be true, but at least those improvements are not contingent on this project.
Yes.
Did you?
I guess the end of my statement, or thought there would be, it's, yes, and it's not contingent, however. And there's always that consideration of, would the city like to better align their timing as, in regard to this public alleyway? Right, so should he not be, should the developer not be funding this public improvement, would the city see it as inhibitive to their plans as to improve that public alleyway? Again, should he not, should the developer not be improving it?
Well, I think if the partnership broke down, and, because this project does propose accessing the rear of the property for its underground parking. So if the relationship with the city broke down, which would be terribly unfortunate, that is a separate matter. And the counselor is desperate to speak.
Well, I just, to try to help clear it up, that part, you know, and I sort of like the idea of talking about doing those separately because as a city council, we've actually set some money aside for our upcoming budget year to actually rethink all of Market Square, down Congress, and all the feeder roads. So I think as part of that rethinking of what all of that could possibly look like, and this is tied into my request of trying to move the Route 1 traffic over to State Street as well and making that two-way. So I think we have the possibility of rethinking all of that space and we could rethink it all at the same time. And that the city council can then deal with those concerns at that time as well as we go down that road.
So I guess the larger consideration for me was, yes, it's amazing to have a developer willing to contribute. And I think the payment in lieu of other licensing fees is absolutely fine. And so to your point, counselor, if we, he were to, if the developer were to be contributing funds and willing to help with the design, would we be relying on that? Would the city be relying on that? And would the developer be assuming the development or design influence?
It just has nothing to do with this project.
Okay.
It's a city council decision.
Those questions, those are council questions.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, let's look at the project. It's hard not to talk about that.
It's like a dangling carrot.
It's a big thing, and, you know, it's an exciting thing, too. So I understand that. I saw some hands raised down here, they.
I was just going to clarify for everyone, I guess, and Andrew, that what we're looking at tonight is the site plan. And everything else is great discussion, but we don't know if it's going to happen or could change or what have you. But it's exciting, I hope it happens. But we're here just for the site plan.
Yeah, absolutely. Not to muddy the water, but I will.
Go ahead.
On stipulation 2.5, it does call out, prior to issuance of a building permit, the proposed offsite improvements for High Street, Lad Street, and Haven Court will be reviewed and approved, authorized by the city entity to ensure building, pedestrian, vehicular, and emergency vehicle safety. So it is somewhat tied in the current, and I made this question a little bit for staff, just kind of the background on that one stipulation. I know the applicant said that they are comfortable with all the stipulations, but I just want to, I guess, clarify that.
I wondered about that one myself.
Right, and it, you know, it's up for, you can certainly pull that one. I mean, if you want to completely separate it from the offsite improvements, I think this came out of TAC discussion just to ensure that they would have that offsite plan reviewed and approved kind of concurrently with this. But, you know, you can definitely pull it if you feel like it shouldn't be as part of this approval.
I do think after all the conversation we've just had about it, it only makes sense to pull it. It is truly separate. And to then circle back and have a stipulation that attaches a condition that we've been saying all night is separate, doesn't make any sense. You could just delete the first few words and say, have it start with the proposed offsite improvements. Let those be reviewed and approved and authorized by the city.
And I think it should say city council, not city entity. I think that was just a typo.
Excuse me, so how would it read? Can you just say that as a sentence?
Proposed offsite improvements for High Street, Lad Street, Haven Court will be reviewed and approved, authorized by the city council to ensure building, pedestrian, vehicular and emergency vehicle safety. Just taking out the prior issuance of building permit.
You understand that?
Yeah, I understand it, but I just think we should take the whole thing out because, again, it's still referring to offsite improvements.
Well, what's the pleasure of the board? We take the whole thing out.
Should we separate between utility offsite improvements and community enhancement improvements?
Yeah, because that was my concern. Because there are offsite improvements regarding utilities that are being done for the building. So we don't want to lose that part of it. So that's why it was fine, as long as we don't make it pertaining to issuing to the building permit, but that they're still reviewed by the proper entities, whatever's needed, whether it's easements or whatever is needed for those offsite improvements to make sure everything's appropriate.
So should it be, are you saying necessary offsite improvements? Is that what you're saying, or?
What is proposed in this, which is not those additional things? It's just what's proposed in the site plan.
Site plan, yeah.
Right, it's just what's proposed. That's the way I read it, so.
So would you propose to eliminate that?
I propose to leave it exactly as I wrote it, or rewrote it.
Okay, and Peter's got that?
Right, but that still includes Lad Street.
And we're doing a lot of editing without a motion, but.
I think that's how the utilities come down Lad Street, that's why.
Okay. Any other discussion before somebody makes a motion to really talk about this?
So on this same point, 2.5, then can we just specify that it's specific to utilities? Or is there anything else other than utilities? I mean, I think, just because that, the terminology, offsite improvements is a whole thing separate from this site plan, I'd just like to.
But it's proposed in this site plan, offsite improvements only.
But it's just utility offsite improvements?
Well, it might be also sidewalks around the building and that sort of thing, so it doesn't include.
The lighting, the lighting's coming off the sidewalk and going onto the building, so.
I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion that we vote to find that the site plan application meets the requirements set forth in Site Plan Regulation, Section 2.9, evaluation criteria, and adopt the findings of access presented.
Would you like to explain your motion?
I think this is a great project. I think that it's gotten even better with time. I think it's a beautiful building that fits in with downtown. I love the activation of Haven Court and where that might go in the future. And I think it's going to be a great addition to the city.
I'd like to elaborate a little bit on that. I think that, you know, this design team and developer are setting a new standard, a new bar downtown. And this will be one of the top developments in the city. It's a beautiful project, it really is. Just to give a non-technical opinion on it, it's. I agree, it's come a long way, it's a nice. I guess we had a second on that. I got so caught up in all the happy thoughts here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
I will continue to make a motion that we vote to grant site plan approval with the following conditions to be satisfied, subsequent to final approval of site plan but prior to issuance of building permit or commencement of any site work, construction activity, which is 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, to be read as the proposed offsite improvements for High Street and Lad Street and Haven Court will be reviewed and approved, authorized by the city council to ensure building, pedestrian, vehicle, and emergency vehicle safety. And then 2.6, and then 2.7 as well.
Second, discussion?
Can I just possibly add one more to the maker of the motion? That signage be added to the end of Haven Court to indicate that there is no L and local traffic only?
Can we make that prior to certificate of occupancy at 2.8?
Sure.
Could I just comment one thing? When you brought that up, I thought it was a very good point. Knowing that the only way to view that sign would be to mount it on the high end of a garage, do we speak to the placement of the sign, or?
Maybe to.
I think.
I'm sorry?
If you leave it to signage, it could be the discretion of the CMMP and.
Okay. Great, great. I mean, I would push for it to actually be mounted on the garage versus, you know, the building, but.
On that beautiful entrance?
Exactly.
They need city council approval.
I hate to see a sign slapped on this building.
Just the subject to, you know, proper signage for their garage. I am okay with that.
So that was a motion to amend, she just accepted it.
Now, second, the amendment.
Um, something I was about to say, and then I just totally lost my train of thought. It's like, got confused. Yeah, no, we can move forward. I forgot what I was going to say.
Did it have to do with council?
It doesn't matter.
It's gone, okay.
It's gone, it's completely gone.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We have two other items. We have two other items this evening that could take a little bit of time. One is the request Deer Street for extension.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to move item 6A.
I have to recuse myself from the Deer Street extension.
Okay. We've had it. Motion to move it up in the agenda, which is what I was leading up to. Thank you for jumping right in.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Andrew, I understand you'll have to recuse yourself on this one, the Deer Street application. Okay. We have a request for the 238 Deer Street LLC for property, 238 Deer Street, requesting a one-year extension to the planning board's site plan approval granted March 17, 2022, and to modify the conditions of approval and the conditional use permit that the expiration can coincide with the extended term of the site plan approval. I'm going to ask that you explain the technicalities on this for us, but who's here to speak to this application, this request, actually?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, John Shaglin from Ambed Engineering, speaking on behalf of 238 Deer Street LLC. Also here tonight is Sharon Summers, counsel for the applicant. The property is tax map 125, Lot 3. And the board approved a one-year, we're asking for, sorry, a one-year extension of the site plan to, which would expire, a one-year extension was granted about a year ago. And we're asking for, that, that will expire on March 17 of this year. So we're asking for a second year extension of that site plan approval, which is pretty normal. But we're also asking you to modify the conditional use permit, which was extended on February 17 of 2022. And what we would like to do is ask you that, ask that that conditional use permit track with the site plan agreement and become a part of the site plan approval. So briefly, the timeline of the project is that the project conditional use permit was granted by the planning board in February 18 of 2021. I'm not sure a majority, but some of you were a part of that approval. And that was sort of a threshold issue for the proposed development. The developer has a lot that he wanted to develop into micro housing, which is definitely a need. There wasn't the ability to provide parking on the site. So we asked and received a conditional use permit to allow that project to go forward. That was a key part of the approval that the developer did not really, and you would not expect him to expend design, time, and effort without that being in place. So subsequent to that, and in September of 2021, the project design proceeded. And as a result of the design, there were some variances that came to light that were needed to be approved. So in September of that year, variances for open space, rear yard setback, and issues regarding the penthouse level were approved. At that point, the project then could proceed on the next step in the process, which is historic district commission. So November of 2021, the project received historic district commission approval. And then at that point, we were able to go forward with the site plan. And this board approved the site plan in March of 2022. So fully a year and a month from the grant of the conditional use permit, that time was taken up, taken up in getting the project to the final finish line. Now, it's only been a year, but the planning board condition, conditions included providing some temporary construction easements. Some of those were amended by, and one of those was eliminated by a request to the, to technical staff in November of 2022. But that, those, that is condition number one. Condition number two is that the project submit a CMMP plan. And it was recognized at the technical advisory committee that the site is pretty much occupied by the proposed construction. So that, that was going to be a key part of moving forward. And the developer did submit a instruction management mitigation plan to the city. The review of that was held up through various issues. And so that has not progressed to a completion point. Condition three is that we record the site plan. And that recording of the site plan is being held up while we meet all the other conditions. The fourth condition is that the city be granted an easement for additional pedestrian walkways. I don't know if the site plan can be put up, but as you, we're, the people that were here in the site plan approval, adjacent to the east and south sides of the building is an existing community space easement to the city. And the space between that property line and the building is going to be dedicated to the furtherance of that public space. So that easement is signed and ready to be recorded. But again, there's a lot of things that have to cascade into place because it doesn't make sense to record that unless the project goes forward. But it's ready to go. The fifth condition is that we fill out the PTAP online portal. That's done. Identify an engineer of record. That's done. And we make some minor plant corrections, and that is done. So we get to the conditions of the conditional use permit that theoretically, if we weren't here for more time, we would have to comply with immediately before it expires. And that's the long-term leasing of seven parking spaces and the updating of the lease that was presented to the board regarding how those spaces are accounted for in the rental of the micro units. And without further ado, I'm going to turn that issue over to Sharon Summers.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sharon Summers. I'm with Donnie Hootucker in Chandela, and I've been involved with this project in front of a couple of the land use boards, but not in front of all. I would just like to piggyback on what John had said in terms of the, the progress that we have made since we originally received the conditional use permit back in 2021 and then progressing through. We actually got the site plan approval a year ago. So this is our first extension for the planning board's site plan approval. As John has summarized, there were a number of conditions which we've made significant progress on from the site plan approval. We've made substantial progress in obtaining or finalizing the easements that are necessary from either the abutters or from the, from the, from the city. One of those easements is still outstanding. It's been, it's under review by one of the abutters. And he's conceptually in agreement about the idea of signing it. He just wants to finesse some of the language to make sure he's adequately protected. With regard, so, so I think that with the, the, the site plan conditions, John has described those to you. And they are moving along frankly as quickly as, as a complicated project can, can allow for. With regard to the conditional use permit, just, and this was a couple of years ago, so just to refresh your memory quickly. What was discussed at that meeting was the notion that this board really wanted to ensure that the tenants that are going to be in this building would not abuse the nearby neighborhoods for off-street parking. And so one of the things that the board did was to require that there be lease provisions within the lease for each tenant that has been provided to the city attorney. I, I believe that that's been approved, and I can certainly get, get that confirmed. And the notion would be that each tenant, when we go to have our CO and start signing people up for tenancies, will need to indicate whether or not they have a car and how, and then we're going to have that lease indicate where they're going to be parking. As part of the discussion with the board back in 2021, there was also concern that that just, that that might not be enough, that they wanted to have kind of a backup or a plan B in order to ensure that if for whatever reason the foundry garage was completely booked up, that there was some sort of an overflow or surplus, if you will. So the planning board asked us to obtain a lease or an option for seven off-street spaces. Now, what has happened since then is, as John has described, a lot of time has gone by getting a lot of these other approvals. And we've made efforts to reach out to various people who would be the logical parties to enter into either an agreement or an option with. And they have voiced, not inappropriately, the question of, well, jeez, when is, you know, what's the term of this option going to be? When is the lease actually going to start? When will the option be triggered? And it's been very difficult frankly to answer that question. And so while we have a lot of feelers out there, nothing has yet materialized. As recently as today, I actually talked with another person who might be able to do something. But again, the question is, you can't really enter into an agreement until you have a lot more certainty as to what, when that is going to start and when it's going to stop. And so our thought would be that we would get an extension, if it's the board's pleasure tonight, for meeting the, the conditions of the site plan approval, which are underway and have been pursued in good faith. And then we would tie the obligation, which we readily admit that we have, to obtaining this lease to the completion of our conditions on the site plan approval, so that one will, will dovetail with the other. We think that that's an appropriate solution to this practical set of issues that we have. And we think frankly that it's, it's a solution which, which is going to, without granting it, mean that this project may not go forward because we'd have to come back and seek another conditional use permit in front of this board. So with that, and I'm going to try to preemptively answer a question which I know some of you may ask, which is, what is the thinking of the applicant? What, what are they intending to do? What is their timeframe for trying to make some decisions and to, you know, try to actually complete the deal? My understanding, as with many of the projects that may have been before this board recently, is that between last year's slew of bad information in terms of the cost of construction materials and also the, the difficulties associated with getting financing and the interest rates, that there's been some reluctance and difficulty and actually for various developers trying to make a decision as to when they're going to be moving forward. I have spoken with my client and they, they are telling me that, that right now they feel that the construction material cost is in fact stabilizing. And they are cautiously optimistic that the financing world is, is going to become a little bit more stable and that the interest rate situation is going to become a little bit more stable. So that they do feel that by springtime, they will be able to make more clear-cut decisions on moving forward, wrapping this thing up, and then being able to pull the building permit, which would be the time when they would finalize the, the easement, or not the easement, excuse me, the options. So if the board has any questions for either John or myself, we'd be happy to answer that. And other than that, we would ask that this board grant the extension and coordinate the conditional use permit condition so that it ties in with the, with the extension and enables the project to go forward.
I've got some questions, but I'm curious if the board has. Yes?
I just want to confirm that you're requesting, just to make sure it's very, very clear, that you're requesting that we, that you will complete the conditional use permit prior to any issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and this will be the last request for any extensions?
It will be the, well, I, I can't guarantee that we might not need an, an extension for the site plan because I think we're entitled to two. Am I correct in that, John?
Yeah.
No, this is the first.
This is the first site plan.
This is the first for site plan.
But once you pull a building permit, you'll be, you'll satisfy...
Oh, yes. Yes.
The conditional use permit conditions must be satisfied prior to building permit, so.
So I, I think that would answer the question, so that...
So they can't get, I just don't want to tie it in and then they're getting an extra extension. Do you see where I'm going with that?
We, and we do understand that. We do understand that. And we, we would need to have it in place anyway, once we had the CO, because that's when we're going to start entering into tenancies or leases with tenants.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, my question, I find this really confusing, the way that you are trying to fold these in together. And so in your explanation about how the lease is going to be triggered and how that's difficult with the way that it's set up right now, isn't, aren't the, you, you can set a date for when you need to lease these required seven parking spaces according to the timeline that you yourself will be setting about when building will start. I do not see how the time of the leases has anything to do with our extensions.
So let me, let me try to, to, to explain that. So when we got the conditional use permit, our obligation was to enter into either an option to lease or a lease itself. While there was no particular time constraint on when that option or that lease needed to be entered into, the term of the conditional use permit approval itself was for one year, I believe. And then we got an extension. And so here we are, our conditional use permit is due to expire, I believe, tomorrow. What has happened during that two-year time period is that in order to enter into an option, and I'll, you know, let me just pick randomly, and I'm not suggesting for a moment that he's committed to anything, but let's, let's say that we decided to enter into an agreement with Granite State Minerals for an option to lease when we go to start leasing some of these units to tenants. The question that would be answered by us drafting the option and also by the person who would hold the option is, when, how long is this option going to be for? How, how long do I keep my valuable parking spaces off the market so other people do not rent them? And what we have had to say is that we're not sure. Now, if, because we don't know, we have not been able to know when the conditions of approval would otherwise be completed so that we would be able to pull a building permit. I think a better way to try to answer your question is that once the conditions of approval for the site plan have been completed, we will then be in a position to be able to go to a particular vendor of parking spaces and say, all right, we're ready to pull our building permit. It will take, my understanding roughly is it will take 15 months to construct the building. And so that the, the option period would then be 15 months, let's say, in rough figures. After which, at the conclusion of that option period, then the lease itself would be entered into. And just to kind of close that out, the, the conditional use permit called for the lease itself to be for a period of, an annual lease to be reviewed at the end of each year for a period of up to five years following the certificate of occupancy. And the purpose for that was to determine whether or not the off-site spaces were even really necessary. It's, it's a kind of a safety valve. It may turn out that once these, these apartments go online, that there was going to be adequate parking for the people to simply go to the foundry garage. But the planning board, and I think wisely, wanted to have some sort of protection in place so that they could have a lease on the books, check it once a year, and then determine whether or not it was needed. And at the end of five years, that obligation went away.
Yeah, I understand that. I think there were a number of neighbors who were very concerned too. So I think that that is actually responding to neighborhoods who are really worried about off-street parking. So I understand that. But in your review of where you are regarding the conditions being met for the site plan, aren't you completely there except for this one outstanding easement that you... that you feel is about to come in? So again, I don't understand why.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to let John speak to that, because he's more in charge of the, the site plan mechanics than I am.
So condition number two of your approval was that a construction management and mitigation plan be submitted. And I think I, I need to just read it. A construction management and mitigation plan will be required to address at minimum access and use of the missile right-of-way construct the building and proposed staging areas. Heavy machinery staging and access shall be from Deer Street. That was submitted to the city, but because the construction involves not closing Deer Street, which is a concern, there has to be some staging areas off-site. And so once again, the process is being held up at the planning department because those off-site areas are not identified. They were identified in the CMMP plan, but agreements were not signed because construction is not imminent, and those spaces are too valuable for a developer to just say, I'm going to hold them until you get through the entire process. And it's not fair to the applicant to have to lease them now when they got to get through the planning department before they can even get the building permit application reviewed. So that's why we're here. Put it in a nutshell. It's processes that take a lot of time, and then you have to also, you know, get a building construction proposal financed, and the bank isn't going to finance it until the site plan is approved, and the site plan won't be approved until, because the condition was, was, was written that way until that CMMP is executed, or that's the interpretation. So you don't execute the CMMP until you are ready to build, so it's kind of creating a problem. Hope that answers the question.
Yes, Jim?
I'm not sure if this is for Mr. Shagnin or Ms. Summers. The way I read the packet, I kind of feel the planning board's hands are tied with respect to granting a second one-year extension on the parking CUP. And is there any way you can explain why our hands aren't tied or how we are able to grant a second one-year extension on the parking CUP?
I don't think that, I would say that we're not asking for a second extension, and we're aware that we cannot ask for a second extension. I think that what we're asking for is to simply have that particular condition of approval tied to the, the length of time when the, the site plan conditions need to be, to be wrapped up.
But it is changing the clock on the, on the parking CUP nonetheless.
I think it's changing the clock, let me, let me try to answer this. Yes, it's changing the clock on when that particular condition needs to be honored, but I also think that it is changing the clock on that particular condition for reasons which are good and which are consistent with all the other reasons that we have outlined in connection with the site plan extension. The two are inextricably entwined.
Is there any hardship in reapplying for the parking CUP?
I would say yes. There are two types of hardship. One is the hardship of the additional delay that will be caused in having to go through the planning process again. The, the second hardship would be the uncertainty of knowing whether or not we would get the same relief. I don't, I've not done a zoning analysis, so I don't know if there are any differences in regulations that may have come into play between 2021 and now that may have an impact on the ability to get that, and, and various other factors means that we may have expended a lot of time and money and effort to get to this point and then have to basically start from scratch on what is essentially a threshold issue.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could follow up on that before you. As you may recall, I voted in favor of this project or remain in favor of the project, but I, I feel constrained by the, the ordinance. The initial letter of decision tracks the language of 10-24610, which allows one and only one extension. And a conditional use permit is an innovative land use control, as you well know. It's not just a simple condition like, you know, talking to your neighbor or securing an off-street parking spot. So it's different than a site plan condition, and I, technically, how do you, how can you merge them and how can we get away from that, what appears to me to be a prohibition in the ordinance? Show us a way, I'm, I'm willing to hear.
Well, other than what I have just said, which I, which is that I think that the condition is, is linked to the, to what I've just described with regard to the site plan conditions, you know, you're, you're correct in that the ordinance says what it, what it says, it's just that we're asking for the timing of the honoring of it to be, to be linked to this, this extension. Did you want to say something?
I wanted to say.
Oh, hang on.
Need a couple minutes?
Yeah.
The board would like to take a break while, while they're talking? Good idea. Okay. Not my idea, it's a manager's idea. Good idea, thank you.
How many minutes?
Five, five minutes.
Five minutes.
We have to wait till everyone's seated.
Folks, we are back, and you guys have had a few minutes to commiserate.
Analyze, I prefer to think.
Right. So, in answer to your question, I went back and took another look at our request and also looked at the actual text of the relevant regulation, which is 10.246.10. And what we are asking the board to do tonight, we're really asking for two things. One is to extend the site plan approval for a year. And then the second thing that we are asking the planning board to do is to modify the condition on the conditional use permit that the applicant produced a lease and so forth, such that that condition can coincide with the extended term of the site approval. And I think that there is authority to be able to do that under the ordinance or under the regulation language, which indicates that a conditional use permit shall expire within one year unless otherwise, from the date granted unless otherwise stated in the conditions of approval. So I believe that if this board were to modify the conditions of approval, that you would then be able to get past that time constraint.
Where do you see that language?
In Section 10.246.10.
Okay. Because that language, it does say, can be extended by as much as one year if an extension is requested and acted upon. No other extensions may be requested, and that was contained in the letter of decision two years ago. No other requests may be requested. So you're proposing that because of the site plan, you want to try to somehow incorporate the CUP into the site plan and make the extension of the site plan envelop the CUP? Is that your...
That's one way of putting it. And also, I think, to modify the condition of approval, I mean, another way of phrasing it is to modify the condition of approval in accordance with that language, which I just read, which would allow that condition to be satisfied in a timeframe consistent with the site plan approval. So I think if you did that, if you took that approach, if you modified the condition, you would then get past that one-year time constraint.
It doesn't get me past it, but I'm only one.
Okay.
So, any other discussion?
I was actually the person who requested all of these hoops, for the record. And the reason I did it was because that is my neighborhood that's back there, and we are, have a lot of parking issues. So I think that we worked really hard to come up with some innovative ideas in order to try to, you know, look at the parking over a long period of time and see, because we don't have any true microunits in, or small, very tiny units in Portsmouth as of yet downtown like this. And so the idea that keeps getting floated out is, do they really need parking or don't they? Well, the idea of they would have to find them parking if they do need parking, and that we could look over this, you know, continuously for five years and be able to try to figure out, I thought was a really great way for us to be able to figure out what, you know, as we are starting to look at parking regulations, this would be great information to have as well. So I'm willing to move forward and try to modify this with the idea is that this, I kind of rewrote the actual motion, that it has to be completed prior to issuance of a CO, and the extension would be final for the conditional use permit. Like, it would have to be done within the next, basically, we're giving them a year and a month. And if they don't draw a building permit in the next year and a month, then that conditional use permit can go away. And I think we have, since we're being so flexible and modifying and have the ability to do that, I think we can say that. So that's my thoughts on it. I'm willing to try to go out there. It's been a rough road, and I did think that they kind of brought that to us so early that I always thought, how long is it going to take before we actually see site plan, which it was quite a timeframe in between the two? So I'm willing to stretch the idea of modifying and modify it in that way. But that's just me.
I'd be willing to support that idea, especially considering that the applicants are asking for more time to simply do what they've been asked to do. They're not looking to change their plan. They're not looking to, they just need more time to achieve what they've been asked to achieve. And I don't think it's precedent-setting, because, I mean, this is a very unique situation. As Counselor said, you know, microunits are recent, you know, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of microunits to refer to. And I would, I would speak a little bit to the idea of these off-site leased spaces and whether or not it's a good idea and it's going to help us solve our problem with microunits, because it doesn't actually force the person to use the space. It might be a little bit remote, they can still park wherever they want. You don't, you can't tell someone you must park in this spot. So they could simply lease spots wherever they wanted to. I'm talking about future developments or, the idea of it, I still, I think, needs some more thought. But for all the reasons that we've just spoke about, I do believe it's valid to give some extension to the project, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of discussion, you want me to make a motion? We don't have a motion on the floor, correct?
I was just about to say that.
I'd be happy to make my motion that I drafted here, as I wrote it. Vote to grant a one-year extension to the planning board approval of the site plan and amend the conditions of approval for the conditional use permit to be completed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and the extension would be final for the conditional use permit. Does that add in everything I said?
Did you put the absolute limit that you talked about in there?
Right. It would be final, like, this extension, that's why I put the extension would be final for the conditional use permit.
They're second to that.
Second.
But I was going to suggest a timeframe, or...
Well, so it would be, what, March, whatever the March 2024 timeframe is, whatever that date is. I just didn't have the date in my head. Basically, it's a one year and a one month.
March 17.
March 17, 2023.
2024, so that would be March, yeah, would be final for as of...
So we have to vote on this before 12:01, right? Otherwise it is...
Jim, you had...
Yes, I'm very sympathetic to your conditions. I believe you all have legitimate concerns here, but, you know, our zoning ordinance is not a, they're not suggestions, they're rules. And I feel myself bound to the rules, and I feel that it wouldn't be too much of a hardship for you just to come back and ask for a CUP extension on the parking.
It'd actually have to be a new one. They're asking for an extension. Any other... Yes, Jane.
Yeah, I, in debating this, you were able to make a lot of progress in two years on the site plan. I don't really know this, but I assume that the planning department, when they're, when they, they know the dates that things are going to become due, so I'm sure they are also paying attention to these deadlines also. So I just tend to believe that there's more to the story than just that it's the planning department that needs to work with you guys on the CMMP, and you still have the one outstanding easement also. So I tend to agree with you, Jim. I think, I think, you know, I don't think that we should make an extension of another year on this when our ordinance says quite the opposite, and that you're welcome to, you know, come back and ask for a parking CUP.
I'm just going to add, all the reasons submitted are reasonable and equitable. And to me, I've actually made a note that this is something in the ordinance I'd like to see changed. I think it's too constraining, but I, I spend too much of my time with zoning ordinances. I can't, I can't go against these words, even though I think it's a good idea. I support the project, I voted for it, as you know. I didn't even support the off-site leasing for parking spaces for this project, so, but I don't see the, the ability to do what's been asked under the ordinance which is written. Any other discussion? Do we need, we may need a roll call on this.
I would request a roll call.
Let's have a roll call.
Could someone repeat the motion, please?
Yep. Vote to grant a one-year extension to the planning board approval of the site plan and amend the conditions of approval for the conditional use permit to be completed prior to an issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and that the extension would be final for the conditional use permit as of March 2024.
Okay, we have a roll call. Would you do the honors? All those in favor?
I'm in favor of the site...
A roll call? Oh, a roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
If you put, okay, to this entire conglomerated motion, I say nay. I am, however, in favor of an extension of the site plan, but because it's all together with the second part, I say no.
We could, I could break it into two motions.
Well, we have a motion and a vote, but let's, we can, there'll be another motion.
Okay.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Counselor Morrow?
Yes.
Skip you.
You can skip me.
Mr. Hewitt?
No.
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Four to four.
Motion fails.
How about I start with a motion to grant a one-year extension to the planning board approval of the site plan?
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Is it even worth making another one? I don't know how else to do it.
Anything further on the CUP? Yes.
Not that I'll change any minds, but some, I'm the only one that hasn't spoken on it. I think, just as others who have said, you know, the city has really looked at trying to pull off these microunits in a number of different places, and for one reason or another, they, they have been either, basically, the developments have shifted direction. So I think it's something that we all want to see try to occur in this city, and given the constraints of the site, you know, I'm not sure how else we can tackle the parking issue out there without completely changing this project. And so while they would have to come in front of us for another CUP if we, if we don't amend this current CUP, I don't think, I think the project as a whole will not move forward. I do feel for the applicant when it comes to trying to get various city approvals and other permits and of the such from regulatory agencies. It is a very time-consuming process. A lot of times you have conflicting, even within the city itself, you have conflicting requirements from different departments than you would think that, you know, the planning department be helping things along, and I'm sure they are, but at the same time, it doesn't, you know, it's not a fine-tuned machine by any means. And so a lot of times, the applicant is, you know, sometimes having to go around and around, you know, get a permit from this one, get a permit from this one, oh, you got to go back to that one. And so it's, you know, maybe they could have done things differently and tried to speed things up, but there's that. And then also, as we all know, you know, the past year has been, been pretty interesting, and we ran into similar issues when, when COVID hit. You know, applicants, you know, went from not, not thinking that they would be able to build projects at all to, you know, a boom of projects. And so things are always, you know, very dynamic and everything else, and I would just, I would just hate to see, you know, something that I think folks in this city really want to try to, you know, essentially a pilot program, to see if it's feasible to make it work, and I'd hate to see, you know, something such as this shoot down. I don't think that we are bending the rules by any means. I do think we are just amending the conditions at this point in time. And so I think that, along with the extension, I think it's a reasonable request by them, and so I will be voting in favor of amending the CUP.
And you did.
Yeah, there's no new motion, right?
Just to, if I'm just going to explain, because I do support the project, and I agree with everything you set up until the very end, the provision of the ordinance that constrains me, and I think constrains the other people who voted against it, doesn't apply to just this parking CUP, it applies to all CUPs. And I think, given the realities of construction vagaries and all the approvals processes and interagency activity that you talked about, that paragraph needs to be changed. I mean, if it just said for good cause, we could give it another extension. I'm with you 100%, but it doesn't. And I don't, I'm not sure why it doesn't, but it doesn't.
So are we constrained that we cannot make any changes to the conditions of approval after the fact?
The CUP, yeah, it's done. We can only grant an extension. We can't change it without a new application, in my opinion. And again, 10.246.10 applies to all CUPs, and there are innovative land use controls, as I mentioned, to the applicant. That's a special section of the statute. It's not like a site plan approval. A site plan approval, that's why you're allowed more extensions for site plan approval. Those are traditional planning board responsibilities. Innovative land use controls are more recent, and that's why an appeal of an innovative land use control doesn't even go to the ZPZBA, it goes to the Housing Appeals Board or the Superior Court. So it's, to me, all the reasons you've mentioned and the folks who've voted in favor, but I agree, it's, it's logical, but as Mr. Hewitt said and the other people, I feel constrained by the way the ordinance is written.
Well, I guess my only comment to that would be, you know, the staff certainly understands the ordinance and the intent of the ordinance, and so having the staff put forward the ability for us to amend the conditions of approval, that's, you know, I guess I'm relying on staff for that, that interpretation, that we can amend the conditions of approval.
As I had to say in a deposition recently, sometimes planning boards make mistakes. So...
I was going to say, I'm so sorry, you raised your hand first.
You didn't see me, but I just wanted to add that, in addition to this whole piece about the ordinance and staying true to the ordinance, I mean, I don't think it's, you know, now, now a couple of years have gone by, and the parking terrain in Portsmouth, it changes constantly as other buildings are built, as people search for parking, which is, it is a pursuit of many people I meet on the street, the pursuit to find parking. So it wouldn't be such a bad thing, I'm just looking at it from the point of view of the applicant applying for a parking CUP to be able to have another round of discussion, including from people who are abutters and are in the neighborhoods that are possibly impacted by all of this, before we decide. I mean, I think, I think that the environment is changing enough that it actually warrants applying for a new parking CUP.
Any other? The board can make another motion if it wishes to. If it doesn't wish to, I'm going to move on.
I'll make another motion, that the, we vote to amend the conditions of approval for the conditional use permit as requested.
So it's the same as the Counselor's motion just severed?
Mm-hmm.
To be completed prior to an issuance of a CO, and the extension would be final as of March 2024.
Thank you, Counselor.
Then I'll second.
I don't know that we can actually revote on something, but I guess it's been separated, so. Another roll call vote, I suspect?
Sure, I say no.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Hewitt?
No.
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Four to four.
Motion fails, sorry. We have a continuation of a public hearing on the, if I can find it, Phase II regulatory amendments. It's a continuation from the planning board meeting last month, and this is on the Article II regulatory amendments, including 10.440 Table of Uses, 10.814 Accessory Doling Units, Section 10.8 Fiend Garden Cotages, Section 11 Site Development Standards, Section 10.111.0 Off-Street Parking, and Article 15 Definitions. I believe Mr. Cracknell is here to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, Nick Cracknell, the Planning Department, I'm the principal planner. The purpose of my presence tonight is to continue the conversation and the presentation and pick up where Rick Tainer left off in January, I believe, on the 30th, was the meeting a couple of weeks ago. What I'd like to do is really focus in on the, briefly, on the revisions that we've made to the ordinance as a byproduct of the conversation here on the 30th, and also discuss some follow-up comments and questions from board members as well as the public that have, have sort of dribbled in over the last week in an effort to, to clear the air or make subsequent amendments, or agree to, to put them aside and come back to them. So I have a very quick overview here. As Rick said last month, this is really about removing barriers as much as we can here in the ADU ordinance, which has been on the books since 2017. I believe we've had 37 applications since the adoption of the ordinance, and we've had 13 of the units actually go through to occupancy, and a number, obviously, in construction. But quite a few units have gotten approvals and not chosen to build the actual unit. And I can't tell you why, but I'm sure it's a myriad of reasons, and part of the Housing Navigator position is to do some interviewing with prior applicants as well as current ones to, to answer some of those questions, why the units are not actually coming to market. The second goal, back on that slide, is obviously to strengthen the provisions. This is a really important one for many of us. It's to make sure the subordination standards, as well as the design standards for the actual unit itself, are as compatible as possible with not only the abutting structure on the lot, but the surrounding context. There's a lot of variability in Portsmouth, in the neighborhood, sort of quality and character. The idea with the ordinance is to calibrate this more closely to the immediate context of the proposed ADU. And the last, but not least, component here, which is, which is more challenging than it reads, is to make this ordinance easier to understand and read for the user. So, sorry, my voice is failing me a little bit, but what Rick went through in January on the 30th was sort of an outline of the proposed changes that have come out of the Land Use Committee, which includes a couple of members of the board, myself and other staff. There were changes made to the use table. We've shifted away from the garden cottages to just having attached and detached ADUs. Tried to refine the language of the Purpose and Eligibility section of the code, and then really get into those subordination standards to regulate the size, mass, and volume of all ADUs, whether they're attached or detached. Clarify, refine, and maybe beef up the architectural design standards that were in there in the 2017 ordinance. And then there's an effort in this version to create an as-of-right condition, where units within an existing accessory structure could, could possibly be built with an administrative approval from the planning director outside of the conditional use permit process. There wouldn't be many of those units, but the possibility would exist should this ordinance be adopted in its current form. And then lastly, just dealing with the post-approval requirements, how we track these units annually and certify the units, and really deal with the enforcement issue of making sure people are following all the rules over time by introducing the idea of a recorded affidavit. So if there is a reported incident of somebody not adhering to the requirements, at least in the Registry of Deeds, there's a recorded affidavit that they were aware of those. Ignorance will not work as an excuse. Ignorance will not work as an excuse. All right, so what's happened since the last meeting? There are four main sort of areas of agreement that we heard. I heard them from afar, but our team got together and we looked at the ADU size, maximums that are allowed in the ordinance, we looked at the parking requirements, the architectural standards, and again, that review and approval process focused primarily on the administrative approval. So if we go to the, there were the other comments that came in over the last few days or in the next slide, I'll, I'll circle back to these at the end of the conversation, but there's questions about, you know, we currently, since 2017, we still to this day allow ADUs in the rural and the SRA and the SRB districts. Some of these districts don't allow two-family uses. We've actually had a half a dozen ADUs approved in those districts, primarily because we don't consider, and we haven't, that an ADU is actually a second qualifies a property to become a two-family. So I think we're gonna need to make some clarifications to that if there's some confusion about whether an ADU plus a single family actually equals a two-family structure. It's not the way we've looked at it in the past. Some questions about some of the language in the purpose and eligibility. Again, we'll come back to these at the end. Questions raised about the parking, and now that we have addressed the size of the ADU, there are, there are instances where you wouldn't need two parking spaces for a, a single-family home. The dimensional requirements, the questions there about the language we have versus the state statute and dealing with the, the minimum lot area requirements that we have in Portsmouth versus the state statute, and we can, we can talk about that. A good pickup was that since we're allowing ADUs in the character district, CDL 1 and 2, along Islington Street, Court Street, there needs to be a reference for them in the dimensional requirements, which there currently isn't and hasn't been since 2017. The subordination standards, one, one thing we did, and I'll get to it with the size of the units, is shift the size of the ADU from 750 gross floor area to gross living area, which is really the conditioned space, the, the heated and conditioned space, the living area of the unit versus the thickness of the walls in areas that are uninhabitable under the building code. So we have a new definition for that, and I, I think there's some consistency that's been pointed out that we need in the terminology of conditioned and unconditioned space. And then lastly on there, we want to make sure, since we're, we're now moving towards, should you want to do this, not allowing ADUs to be over 750 square feet and not allow the planning board to waive that, which is what has happened since 2017. We need to make sure that the waiver provisions that are in the code today don't allow the board to waive the size of the unit. So I think we'd need to make an adjustment there. So we'll go to the main four areas of so-called agreement from the meeting a couple of weeks ago. The ADU size, again, we were allowing ADUs to be up to 1,000 square feet in the, in the amendment that was before you two weeks ago, and it was based on the gross floor area, again, including the thickness of the walls. That's what's in the code now, it's been there since 2017, GFA. We're talking about moving it to GLA, which is again, the living area. So you measure the size of the unit based on the living area of the unit. But this would cap it at 750 square feet, this version of the amendments. And we have a new definition for the GLA. So as Rick showed this slide last time, there's still two types of attached ADUs, one within an existing building. There's a typo there, I meant to strike more than, it would say up to 750 square feet in the yellow one on the left, but it's GLA, the changes that it's gross living area now instead of gross floor area. That does allow the ADU to be a little bit bigger than if it's GFA, but we're talking pretty small amounts. Okay, and then you look at the detached units, there used to be four categories, now there's only three, because the last one was the units from 750 up to 1,000, so I've struck it out. So there's still seven districts allowing up to 600 square feet in existing building that's not expanded, seven districts with a CUP if, if it needs to be expanded or it doesn't comply with all the standards, dimensional standards of the code. Then the last one is up to 750 square feet in a brand-new building that complies with all the standards. That needs a CUP. So there's very few types that actually could be done administratively by the planning director. So we'll go to the second area that was discussed was, there was a, and I'm not suggesting everybody on the planning board said, hey, we, we need to be able to waive parking, but there was a general consensus, as we understood it, that because there would have been an instance with the larger ADUs where four parking spaces could be required for a single family and an ADU that's over 750 square feet, there was an interest in having at least the ability up at the planning board to waive that without requiring a separate conditional use permit. So we do still require one parking space, off-street space, which was in here a few, couple of weeks ago. It's still in the code that you need one regardless of the size of the ADU. So if you do a 450-square-foot ADU, and we do have some of those, they would normally only require half a space, and if you added that to 1.3, if, if the single family was 2,000 square feet, you'd only need two spaces. And people felt like that was inadequate. So we're requiring one parking space for every ADU created regardless of its size. And the, one of the questions I, I got, I think, yesterday from one of the planning board members, was we also had in that January version that a single-family structure needed two spaces. And the question was raised, well, what if it's a really tiny house and it's not over 750 square feet? There are some of those in Portsmouth, not many. They wouldn't technically need 1.3 spaces, which would round up to two, they'd only need one space under the code if they were a 700-square-foot house. So we made a very minor adjustment, or we need to, not in the version you've got, there's the number two in the parking provision that would just need to be removed, but we'll go back to that in a second. So I don't think there's a need for a waiver provision because we got rid of the larger Questions can come in a minute, we're almost done here. So we, this is what Rick showed a couple of weeks ago. You needed one to two spaces for a principal, and actually, it was two spaces. I put the 1-2 in there today, and you'd have two scenarios if the ADU was up to 750, you'd need three cars. If it was over 750, you'd need four, and we no longer are looking at ADUs of that size. There's only one pathway to take, it'll be three cars or two cars for every ADU, depending on the size of the single family that's already on the lot. So we'll go to the next slide. The third piece were the architectural standards, and there was some questioning about how rigid they may or may not be applied. Some of the language, I think for some folks, was maybe too narrow. We've always had architecturally consistent width, but I think Planning Board member Hewitt offered a really good suggestion that it also include the words similar in appearance to. So the idea here is that there would be a high degree of consistency between the existing principal structure and the ADU, but it's not intended to be a verbatim replication of the quality of the, of, of the primary building that's already on the lot, whether it's historic or not. This is just an example of how that this would be an obvious candidate from an architectural design standard standpoint that would work, that's behind the house, and you can see they're definitely relating. So anyway, ultimately, you guys would be making that decision anyway under the conditional use permit, which will still be 80 to 90% of every application that comes in here if this is adopted. Okay, so number four, the last area, was really getting our arms around the language for the administrative approval process. And, you know, there's certainly no surprise, there are a number of folks, both in the public and maybe board members as well, that are still concerned about creating and establishing this new pathway for as-of-right ADUs administered solely by the planning department through the planning director. But in an effort to try and make this work, so at least some ADUs in existing structures that conform to the zoning in their current location, can address the concerns about the review period, what does the notice entail, what do the neighbors get to know and when, and who are the abutters? What, what does direct abutter mean? And how much time do they have to respond and to whom, and what does that person that receives the comments do with them? So we've tried to tighten up that, that language in the sequence of events. We're envisioning a sign that would be very similar to the demolition notice that the demolition review committee uses. It would be posted in a prominent location on the property. And that same notice would be photographed and mailed through certified mail to all abutters within 100 feet of the subject property. And the abutters would be given notice that they have 30 days to provide written comments to the planning director on the application. The planning director would be reviewing the application against the standards and making a determination whether it meets the standards to, to be approved or not. If it doesn't, the applicant then would seek a conditional use permit in front of the planning board. So that's how we addressed that issue. So these follow-up comments, and I'm not gonna suggest I got all the answers today for some questions that even came in this afternoon, but I think in respect to the rural, the SRA and the SRB, I think maybe at, at least two, if not all three of those, don't allow two-family uses, and they haven't for many years. We allow currently some ADUs, not in, I don't know about the rural district, but the SRA and SRB actually have applications. It obviously makes sense, at least to me, that the easiest places in Portsmouth to, to insert an ADU are those large lot rural locations with much more land than the urbanized neighborhoods in the city. So if we do have a conflict internally, where one can suggest that, hey, you have a single family and you have an ADU, somehow that equals a two-family use because of maybe how the definition was written in 1970 of a two-family use in the back of the ordinance, I would suggest we amend the ADU ordinance to make it very clear that we don't consider an ADU in, in or next to a single family a two-family use, because they really aren't a two-family use. Two families can be condoed, they can be, they can be sold off, rented to anybody, there's no occupant, owner occupancy requirements, they, they are different animals, but I, I appreciate the potential conflict between the table of uses and the definition, and the ADU ordinance that we currently have on the books. Secondarily there on the purpose and eligibility, the intention of the code is, yeah, you don't generally need municipal infrastructure when you're inserting ADUs where there's already roads, pipes, there are secondary lines for power and water and sewer, but you're, you're not building trunk lines like you would in a new subdivision. So there's a, there's a, there's an efficiency that comes with ADUs, it is infill, and, you know, whether you're meeting local needs or contributing to local needs, it's wordsmithing, but yeah, it's a contribution. It's not the be-all, end-all that's gonna solve all our affordable housing needs just doing ADUs. So we could insert something like that into that paragraph for the purpose and eligibility. And I, I do think it's worth looking at the RSA for how we're treating the requirements of meeting the local lot area and frontage requirements for ADUs and essentially waiving that to open the spigot up here. So if you, if you're on a lot, you don't need to meet Portsmouth lot area for dwelling unit and have twice the lot area to support an ADU application, because that's how it's been since 2017, and that, that prevents a lot of people that have sufficient space to, to have an ADU either in their house or, or in a detached situation, but they don't have twice as much land area as the zoning requires they have to do the ADU. And then on the subordination standards, again, that conditioned versus unconditioned space, the target with the GLA, the GLA is only for the ADU. The building itself still has to be GFA. When you measure how big the building the ADU is in, we want to use the whole building, we want to use the thickness of the walls. So we, we need both of those terms embedded in the ordinance, and we need to be consistent with conditioned space. And, and lastly, we need to make sure that we remove the, the waiver possibility for a larger unit from the planning board's menu if, if we truly don't want units over 750 square feet. I think that's, that's it. And these were, these next steps were presented by Rick a couple of weeks ago, speaking to the handbook and tracking these that are moving forward.
Questions for Nick? Andrew?
Mr. Cracknell, to your point about aiding and meeting but not overwhelming infrastructure and solving housing needs in the entire city, I think it's really important to dial in that language, only because we've often heard proposals come before us, and as soon as the applicant feels pushback or any sort of restraint from this board in regard to their plan, one of their first comments is, well, this is going to contribute to the housing issue, the housing crisis, so on and so forth. And so we want to keep that language consistent with our mission and vice versa. That mission should really help and enable, I think, this board to make those decisions. And point being is, we don't want to be at a crossroads of, well, is this in the spirit of the ordinance? And if the ordinance is saying that ADUs are going to really solve and help and contribute, we want to make sure that that goes align and that those jive. So just understanding and really ensuring that that language makes sense for all parties, both applicants and us and the city, is, is really critical in my mind. So that's my thought on that. And then lastly, on page 15 in Section 1081463, you know, we talked about off-street parking and modifying certain plans, but are we able to modify the overall size? And I know that you actually just used an example that we recently had where it was an overwhelming plan, and so one of the largest comments was the actual size of the unit, the ADU. And I'm wondering if in that certain line item, we can modify the size of the ADU without having to deny it outright?
So your question is presumably making a unit smaller? They can't be bigger than 750 square feet if this, if this version of the ordinance was eventually adopted by the city council. So there's already, there's already a governor on the size of the ADU. It's, it is expanded to the GLA, so it's a little bit bigger than the GFA, but the subordination constraints or standards that are in here that govern the size of the building, for example, a detached ADU would be placed in, are substantially better than what we have today, which is essentially next to nothing. So you could theoretically build today a 4,000-square-foot accessory building and stuff a 750-square-foot ADU inside it, and then call all the rest parking and cold storage and what have you, a tool shed. You're not gonna be able to do that with this ordinance because of the subordination. It can only be 75% of the height of the building beside it, rather than something that's shorter, which could be an inch. It can't be more than 75% the height, can't be more than 75% of the, the footprint. The, the, the volume of the building can't be more than 1,600 square feet if it's multi-stored and it still can only have a 750-square-foot unit in it. So I think, I think a lot of the, the problems that the current ordinance has presented to both you, the neighbors and the community have really created an, an unbridled set of, of circumstances that have allowed ADUs to be inserted into pretty big buildings and, and to sort of game the system by calling certain rooms, you know, we don't have the conditioned space, we don't have the GLA. So it gets difficult sometimes to differentiate between a living area and a non-living area, and one's ability, once they get in there, to start using the non-living area as living area, which goes afoul of the, of the code. So we've tried our best to create governors here that'll allow you, the neighbors and the, and the larger community to know what they're getting and, and not have it gamed, if that answers your question.
I think so. I think my question is more pointed at the modification when I think my question is more pointed at the modification when pursuing, make sure I get it right. So a modification of a specific standard set forth in sections 81426, 81430, so on and so forth. So we can require additional off-street parking, we can require that some of these modifications are consistent with the required sections, but the last one is modifying size. And even though they may be under 750 square feet, that still may not be consistent with what we feel is appropriate.
Well, I'm not sure this is going to fully answer your question, but since you're in the right section, which I think is 81463, where the waiver, so-called waiver provisions are, I think there's a section missing we need to add to that. Though you see in that paragraph where it says, accepting sections 10.81441 and 81442, I think we need to add 81432. Those three exceptions, which mean you can't go there and waive those things, those all pertain to the maximum size of the ADUs, the 600 and the 750. And that's, the spirit here is to remove the, the ability, if you want to, to waive the size of these, to make them larger, not smaller, larger. And our understanding was from two weeks ago, we were working towards no bigger than 750 square feet. So I would recommend you add 814.32 into that, into the parentheses that takes those away from the planning board being able to waive them. Again, not really what you asked, but maybe?
No, I mean, the line.
If you want to waive the size, then you would strike all three of those.
I don't.
I'd just like to make a suggestion. I actually was thinking we'd remove the exceptions that are listed there, and maybe just the one in the height could be added in, so it could never be more than the 22 feet that we've sort of maxed out at. But if it's a, I just keep thinking of Belle Isle and how it had one that was much bigger, but it was appropriate based off of where it was located. So giving the planning board the flexibility, if a larger one came along and it made sense, you'd still have the ability to do that. So either we strike out all of them and just give the planning board the ability for height and size of the unit. They can, they don't have to. It would be completely up to the planning board.
I suppose that's where it gets very subjective.
I think you're, sorry, can I respond to that real fast?
Sure. Can you?
That's not nice.
You asked for that.
I guess I did. My read, my read says those two accepted sections are off the table from the planning board. That's my read of it. So if you struck them, then you, you're back kind of where you started, being able to waive anything, anywhere, and maybe have a lot more requests here from this podium than you're comfortable with because they're not on Belle Island, Belle Isle. So that, that is a policy decision. I think you either need to add in this third height, this size governor here for the reference I just gave you, or take them all out.
Joe? I, I just wanted to, maybe as a way to, when we're considering, you know, changing this language, the, the cover slide to your presentation, maybe if we could go to it, that might be a good visual aid. Anything that supports the first three words on that cover slide, which is to, yeah, the second slide, sorry, number two. Because the first words, to remove barriers and provide, I, I think that what we were trying to say is to simplify, we're trying to simplify this process and make it more clear and flexible, right? So I, I would just always, the test for me would always be, does it, do any of these minor changes that we're making make it harder or clearer or easier to?
So I would, I would argue that removing the discretion makes it easier on the public and the applicant because they're not enticed to come in here and negotiate the size of their ADU one by one, case by case. There will be cases like Belle Isle where they, where it's appropriate, but maybe they need another pathway than to allow everybody to come in here and say, I want to do 800, 850. And, and they're spending a lot of money to get to this position, and if it's not something that's going to be regularly supported, that, that's not.
So it simplifies it by clarifying it?
I think so.
It simplifies by clarifying it and saying, okay.
Sets a ceiling and it's clear what it is. Maybe you need a variance if you're going over, but anyway, that's one way to interpret the barrier question.
Yes, Peter?
Nick, thank you. This is a great summary and overview of the document that we have provided. I, I ask, why can't we get these presentations in advance for review on our end?
Like this one?
Yes.
Uh, well, I, I take responsibility for that. I, I was out sick for the week. It's not an excuse. I didn't get this done till today.
It's hard.
I get it.
It's a really helpful document, and it would help me in my preparation, and.
Point well taken. I, I.
I almost, and we have to, all our presenters that bring, that are builders or developers are coming in, have to provide that information to us. It should be part of our preparation requirements.
Noted. Jim?
Mr. Kocknell, I noticed one of the new terms between last, what, January 30th and today was GFA versus GLA.
Yes.
Could you go through the thought process of why you felt that was needed or how, was going to help us or help the, the ADU ordinance?
So the, the thought was with GLA, the live, gross living area, was that it's, it's very easy to define when somebody's got an application and they're showing you a floor plan. It's easy to define where that habitable space, where the condition space, the living space is going to be in the unit. Where it gets tricky with gross floor area, which is the current standard, is it's not clear where the ADU is and isn't inside the building. If the building is much bigger than just an ADU, it has the garage, the tool shed, the storage area, the, the rec room, it's more difficult to judge, I think, if you're with a GFA, if everything's all GFA and you're not defining where the ADU is and isn't. It, it's just easier to see where it is, and it's easier to enforce it, should it bleed into those other areas, which I'm telling you happens, not necessarily just here. It happens all over the country with GFA and FAR standards that people have and, you know, Plum Island's a great example in Newburyport. People put color ties in their attic, these pieces that would, you know, be six feet and the building code is six foot three or eight or something for the ceiling. They get their occupancy permit, then they, they're almost on wingnuts, and they take them all out, and they've got habitable space in the attic that wasn't allowed under the ordinance, and it's difficult to get to. I'm not saying GLA is going to, you know, solve all those problems, but, you know, we're trying to get to identifying very clearly when someone's here and you're up there, where is the unit? How big is the unit? And not get into storage, well, that's a storage room. Well, the stairs don't count, or the, the utility room doesn't count.
Okay. So to use your expression, GLA helps prevent gaming the system?
I think so. Think it helps prevent, yes, helps.
Okay.
Jane?
So we're still just asking him questions, right? Not making comments? I just wanted to be clear about that.
This is different than an application before, so you can talk more.
Okay. Well, there's some things that I've read in here that are, are tiny comments, I mean, tiny edits, but maybe important, like for instance, in your opening part, section 10.440, the table of uses, you're still saying that there's four categories of detached ADUs, and now there's three. It's a tiny thing, but, you know, important. And then more substantial is, I, I still think when we move to purpose and eligibility, that that upfront paragraph, which I know you've also spoken to, it just needs to be more explicit, and it needs to be explicit about what it is for, and it needs to be explicit about what it is not, because again, I don't see the language around shall not be used for short-term rentals, which I think is really critical to ADUs. Also, like throughout this document, and I, I think I get it because, I mean, it's architectural language, but you use the terms, or we all have used the terms, principal residence, principal structure, sometimes it's even principal family. But actually, I think what we're talking about for ADUs is legal primary residence that the owner must have one of those, either the home or the ADU, to be their legal primary residence, and, and that is a legal term. So I think that, that needs to appear somewhere as much as the not short-term rentals. So then when you move down to, I have now obliterated, 10.814.33, I, I still think there's so many negatives in these sentences that why don't you just say what you say in the little comment box? An existing accessory building converted to a DADU continues to be governed by the yard standards for accessory buildings, because it is really confusing. I mean, I keep reading it over and over, that it, that a detached accessory dwelling unit that is not, not created within an existing accessory building is not an accessory building for purposes of the ordinance. I don't know. I, I don't think that makes this more simplistic or more easy to read or more easy to move through, that some of the language is really convoluted. And then in the next section, are we basically saying that all garages, any garage can be converted to a, to a DADU as long as it meets the size requirements and all the other standardized requirements? Basically, we're saying yes, right?
Yeah. I mean, if they meet the standard, sure.
So that opened, that, that fact alone opens up additional housing options tremendously in this town. That's, to me, that's it. Again, on 10.814.22, we're saying the accessory unit shall be occupied, either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit will be occupied by the owner of the dwelling as his or her principal place. But I think it's legal primary residence. I mean, if you're paying, if you're, if you're stipulating to the IRS that this is where you live full-time, and you're paying taxes on that, then it's your primary residence.
And we, we can look at that.
On 10.814.26, it says at least one off-street parking space shall be provided, but shouldn't that be a maximum? Like, it, it shouldn't be stated as a minimum. We're just saying you only get one.
It's both a minimum and a maximum.
It's it, right.
Oh, you could strike at least.
I think you should, could take at least out of there. Many other changes were made. I mean, I think this is a great next revision, don't get me wrong.
On that, on that paragraph, that's where I was suggesting the, the number two be struck.
Yeah.
And just say, in addition to the spaces that are required for the principal, in case it's a very small house and it doesn't require two spaces.
I really agree with that.
Yeah.
Then I, it, just a point that I'm confused about, 10.815.422.
422.
Yeah. It talks about the detached ADU, or has doors higher than eight feet above grade-facing an adjacent property.
So this is all about privacy.
Yes, which I really, I think it's a great point. But then further down on 10.814.32, the height can't, you know, can't be greater than 22 feet, but how do you get?
Those are two different buildings, potentially. The first one you read, 422.
Yeah.
Is a building, a detached ADU that's with, that's located within a side or rear yard, so it's in a non-conforming situation.
I see.
And that other one may not be.
Yep. That answers that. I, I thought maybe we could put in something in this architectural section, so like 10.814.622, 623, 624, somewhere in there. I, I really liked the language about the privacy and everything, but I thought there needed to be something about the character of the neighborhood, so that, yes, it's similar in appearance to the principal building, but also in agreement, harmony, I don't know what the right term is, with the character of the neighborhood.
Yep.
I mean, if you look at 6.624, it says the ADU will maintain a compatible relationship to adjacent properties in terms of location design. That might capture the surrounding neighborhood.
Again, that wording about primary residence in 10.814.71.
So in, in, just before you go back to the primary residence, on 624, what Peter just read, it certainly wouldn't hurt to insert the word "character" between compatible relationship to the, the, the character of adjacent properties.
Right.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
We could insert that.
Are you pretty well done, Jane, or do you, you get another chance if you find something else?
Okay, yep.
Yes, Joe?
Could I just simply, since we're right, we're speaking on, you know, architectural requirements and standards, and I, I was going to bring up the point that I don't necessarily understand the need, the, the, the statements that insist that the character of the ADU matched the character of the existing structure. There could be instances where, it's not allowing for, for, for a different architectural expression or a contemporary expression, or maybe the existing character of the existing structure is subpar to what the, you know, the ADU could be better than it. I just don't, I don't understand the, we're, we're delving a little bit into an architectural review board here, which we're not really qualified to do, that's not what we do. And is there a limit to how much architectural review we, should be giving to these projects? Is there, is there, is there actual legal limit, is there? Do we, because this is not an ACC, it's not a heritage district, there's only so much architectural review that I think we are allowed to do, is that not true?
We are allowed, there's, I don't have it in front of me, I can dig it out. There is a, there was a case on this, and the gentleman from the Municipal Association pointed it out, and I asked him about it at one of our meetings. I'm not sure if you were there, it might have been before you came on the board. This board does have aesthetic control. Now, it's redundant and sort of like double jeopardy in the HDC, because the HDC clearly has that in a historic district. But we don't have guidelines for most of the city, so how do you apply a standard when you have no objective criteria? It's not fair. So that's what, that's what this is about. Now, if you don't like it, that's a different topic, but I do think there is authority for it.
I, I would also argue that I think if this is the spirit in which you approach architectural design review, you're all qualified to do this, because. because you have a frame of reference in what you're looking at. If your goal is to create contemporary and modern expressions where they don't currently exist, then I think the point's well taken. But those are the exact kinds of projects that are creating the most problems in getting through this permitting process today because they clash and they often are not well-executed. I mean, we have 37 of them to look at. And the least successful projects are the ones trying to deviate in a substantive way from the architectural style of the principal structure, which that single-family is. It's meant to be the dominant structure. And I think it's fair, your point, that, yeah, somebody could come up with an amazing contemporary expression for a garden cottage or a unit in the backyard. But the fact that that possibility exists is not what we're seeing. The frequency of that event being proposed and done well is so low, we've got to think about the greater good of lowering barriers and not having everything be wide open because we, God forbid, we're going to give up one great idea that hasn't arrived yet and force them down a different pathway that's maybe a little harder. Whether it's Bell Isle doing a big building or somebody moving here from New York City that's got the money, the budget, and the talent to pull off a building that doesn't look anything like the one they're trying to put aside. We'll find a way to get that person through this process when they come. But leaving it wide open is not doing it. We got 37 applications and only 13 built.
Actually, what it all goes back to is the fact that we still want these neighborhoods to look like single-family neighborhoods. So if you have two structures on one property that don't look anywhere alike, then the idea in someone's brain walking by is, well, that's two different houses on the same lot. So the theory behind trying to make these all very similar or inconsistency with their principal structures is through the look of, oh, we still have a single-family neighborhood. That's the idea behind trying to give the guidance to that and the consistency.
Jim, and then Jane.
Thank you, Chair. I believe, I don't obviously have the RSA memorized, but I believe the state RSA on ADU speaks of architectural consistency. I'm not sure. And also, I've come to know that the city of Concord, believe it or not, that in order to get an ADU in Concord, you have to go through the planning board. And then, once the planning board approves it, it goes to a separate architectural review board. So that's how important, at least Concord thought, architectural consistency was for ADUs.
Jane. I think we think it's important too, Jim. And the reason we think it's important is we, as the planning board, are guided by the master plan. And the master plan has entire chapters on preserving the character of neighborhoods in this town. So I think it's the explicit answer to having some modernistic, impressionistic, whatever, attached to a traditional house is no. It would not be voted through. And we do have the right to that degree of architectural oversight. I mean, I'm not pretending to be an architect, but you can look very easily, start going through neighborhoods and see, is the character of the neighborhood changing or not? And I also really agree with what Beth said. Does it look like, you know, it's one property? Or is it starting to look like multiple properties, which we don't want? So I really disagree. We do have architectural oversight to that degree.
We need to hear from the public. And I'm going to make a suggestion, based on part what Nick said and what I'm hearing from the board members. I don't like going line by line on a committee basis on a document, but I'm thinking we might need to do that here. And we have this room a week from tonight. So while the public is speaking, think about whether you want to get through this. Because I would like to see us get through this and present it to the council as a recommended document, if we can do that. And it's been a while. So think about whether you're willing to do that next week. I'm going to, public hearing was continued to tonight. I'm going to open it up now. So anybody who'd like to speak to, for, or against these zoning amendments?
Good evening, Petra Huda, 280 South Street. So as the board head noted, I don't know what version I have. I don't know what version you have. So, and I don't know what version Nick has. So I'll make some comments, and I hope I'm using the version that everybody's looking at. And I don't want to make this too long because I don't know if I am. 10.814.12. Basically, my comment here is, your two sentences say the same thing twice. Number 814.26. I think Jane hit this, and I think this, her comments were good. My only comment on 10.814.26 is the off-street parking unless you want to get a CUP. So my question is, at that point in time, are you giving the planning board the ability to adjust the parking spaces here? The purpose of this is really not clear to me. I note, we did change from GFA to GLA. The question I have is on the box on the side. An ADU up to 750 square feet is permitted. And then we note use 1.211. I could not find 1.211 or 1.212. If somebody could define what that is and what that actually means. Is this something that is different than what we're looking at here? On 814.331, the last sentence, "One door shall be designed as a principal residence entrance, and the other door shall be assigned to appear secondary." Who makes that call? Okay, on 814.452 and 814.333, in 52, you're just talking about the building height. And the next one, you talk about the footprint. So it's not the same statement here. I don't understand why they're together. And the old statement was no increase in the building footprint, but the new one says includes an increase in the building footprint. ADUs are not supposed to increase the building footprint, or it's an addition. "An existing accessory building shall not be expanded either vertically or horizontally other than through the addition of the front entryway, 50 feet, 300 feet." This is basically extending your footprint with a CUP. So the question is why? Basically, it's a redundant statement at the end. "The building height of the building containing the DADU shall be greater than 22 feet in height." Building height in height. Just a little word there. This, I'm still having trouble with the numbers here. If you could please clarify, if this is above a garage with GFA for two floors, the two floors would be 800 square feet. "The gross floor area of the building containing the DADU shall be no greater than 1,600 square feet." Where in the paragraph and all over, we're limiting everything to 750. If you're above a garage, does that mean the garage can only be 800? If you divide 1,600 by two, that's what you're going to get. So, and it could be 75% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. This is not simple, folks. The only other comment I would have is on the notification process. I think we're going maybe a little overboard here on the abutter notice. And putting all this on the applicant. "The applicant shall also provide a signed notice." That's great. Certified mail. We do not do certified mail for notifications of abutters for anything else. So why would we require them to do certified? That's an increased expense on that. That's just my question. And the same old question on administrative approvals. I noted last time that you said it. I have asked two or three times. I do not support administrative approvals going only through the planning director. I think that is a job of the planning board. And I will say it again, and I will say it in front of council. The only note I had here was, what does this mean? "The ADU complies with all the applicable standards of this section, 814, except as modified by the conditional use permit." I don't know what that means. "Exterior design of the ADU is architecturally consistent with similar, with or similar appearance to the principal dwelling on the lot." Jane, I liked your comment on the neighborhood. The only question I have there is, who makes this call? Is somebody going to go out and inspect this and make this judgment call? And the last one, 10.814.63. "Granting the conditional use permit," and you leave out some. I know this was discussed, but this looks like it's very vague and it creates a possible loophole here. So that was the end of my comments, and thank you for listening.
Good evening, Liza Hewitt, 726 Middle Road. I still have some questions that I hope can be addressed. I find it hard to believe that after six months of work at the Land Use Committee, you're still making changes to the wording of the document. So I am glad that you're going to go, you're going to continue to take a look at this. This ADU ordinance has the potential for making significant changes to neighborhoods in the city, and you need to get it right. I appreciate the further explanation tonight. I left the last meeting extremely confused, even after sitting through five months of Land Use Committee meetings. So I'm glad there was some further explanation. It was, it became a little more clear. You know, I, before I got here, I had kind of questioned what had happened between January 30th and now that would require changes, such as changing the phrase gross floor area to gross living area. I understand it a little bit better now. I just hope there's nothing tricky hidden in there. And why did you change the phrase entire building to just building in several places, including as it relates to height? I've asked for months as to why the lot area requirements now combine the dwelling unit and the ADU. And I got a little bit of an answer tonight. But the way the ordinance has been revised will drastically impact the infill in neighborhoods. And as a resident, I would just like to hear some discussion from the planning board on the thought behind drastically reducing the necessary lot size. Finally, my vote would be for making the language clearer and not allowing the leeway and the exceptions. At the rate this is going, that Housing Navigator is going to certainly have their work cut out for them if they are going to develop a guidebook to explain this to people as they're going through this process, because it is confusing. Thank you.
Esther Kennedy, 41 Pickering Ave. And I'm going to keep it real simple. I do believe it should go through the planning board. I think that it allows people to have, any neighbors can look at it, have a question. It's not, it doesn't look like it's being snuck through the city. So I really think it allows people to be part of the process. And I don't see any reason to hide a process. So I would encourage you to do that. For the record, and I want to put it on the record, that I am worried about ADUs. And to be honest with you, I'd love to do one, so I respect them. However, I heard something very interesting the other day. And when I followed up, we heard from Nick tonight that it's not two dwellings. However, when I followed up, because I was at a closing with a banker, and if it has a kitchen, or even a kitchenette, if it has a closet, if it has a bedroom, if it has a bathroom, it can be considered a second dwelling. And two dwellings on one property will limit some fineness to companies. So for what we want to do for now, and maybe, it might be a quick fix, my worry is that people will not be able to afford these in the second round. The young home buyer that needs Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac. So I took it, and I went to a couple of real estate agencies just to kind of follow up and kind of get their thoughts on it. And they most definitely agreed for veterans loans. So what we think we're doing to add property, I would really encourage you to investigate. We might be short-selling ourselves so people coming after us will not be able to buy a house or buy this house. So that is my short-term investigation of the whole thing. But it really worries me that when we think of some of our homes up in Elwin Park, Panaway Manor, where a lot of our first-time homebuyers can buy. And I know things are pricey now, but I also have seen the market take a major dive in years past, hence the reason I was able to move into Portsmouth. Are we setting ourselves up so that first-time homebuyer can't get a loan? So I would, again, encourage you all to look into it. I never really put much thought into it until I started investigating it because of a comment that was made when I asked about it at a real estate closing. And I guess I just don't want to set us up. And I don't want to have the next generation be set up because of a decision we made today. So thank you.
Elizabeth Crater, property owner, 159 McNabb Street. It's obvious that there still needs to be more cleaning up to the language and making it a little clearer and easier to understand. I think that maybe we should hire Petra to do this, to work with Nick, because obviously she picks up even more details than I do, and that's wonderful. But generally speaking, I think we are moving in a direction that is new for this city. I think that adding anything to your home, if you've done any work anywhere, I have two projects going on in two different cities, and I'm ready to shoot myself. But the cost is phenomenal. And I believe that an ADU may be helpful if you have a family member that you have to take care of. And they may provide an opportunity for people who have not very much money coming in when they get elderly to be able to rent out that space and be able to stay in Portsmouth and maybe afford the taxes, which is going to be a huge issue as our valuation goes up. I don't necessarily believe they will become usable housing for someone young moving into the neighborhood because I think in order to build them, they will be very expensive. But I think making them available to people is an idea. I don't think everybody's I don't think everybody's going to do it, and I think some people will not like it because of the fact that you are going to change single-family homes. I recently wrote a letter to our legislator, legislators' body to remind them that we don't have to take single-family home areas and turn them into four dwellings, because that takes away the idea you pay extra to move into a single-family home and have a yard and a place for your kids to play and to have neighbors who are not right on top of you, like those of us who are property down on McKenna Street, where you can hear the person across the street cough, much less have a conversation. So you do pay more money to have those, and putting the ADUs in those areas may or may not change the character of the neighborhood. This is an experiment, and I agree that it is a necessary experiment to some levels. But I think the cost is going to change the way they work, and I think it is important that we do clarify all this wording that has been brought up by the public, as well as you, to make sure that what we're presenting to the city council is something that we would really like in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else present or via Zoom?
If anyone on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand.
More discussion? Guys thought about what I suggested a few minutes ago?
So could you kind of explain how that would work? A meeting, I mean, is it, like you said, we just, a new revision would be prepared, correct? And then we'd get that at some point, and we'd go through it line by line?
I think that's what we need to do. And if the entire board doesn't want to do it, that, you know, and I appreciate your frustration, but that's what I'm hearing that was happening. We were going line by line at different stages tonight. I know lots of notes have been taken. I've taken a few. Peter's been taking a whole bunch. There's a lot of comments, so I think there would be changes, but I think there's still some things to talk about that may be a little bit in the weeds, but as, as I heard, I think we do need to get it right. I don't think it's that hard getting from where we are to a final product, but I think it's really hard doing it like this. I think we're going to have to sit at a table like there or in that room on the side. That's what I was thinking. Yes, Beth?
I'd be ready to make a motion with some amendments to this, but I, I personally think that we could clean up some of this through some amendments and move it forward.
I'd hope to see.
Excuse me, Peter?
I'd hope to see the presentation provided, and if there's any revisions based on tonight, have those included. It's, I think it's, it's important to have that stuff provided to us in advance for review.
Right, but to get, I think what Council Moro is saying is she wants to propose a motion that basically says we're done. Try to, this would be interesting. I'm not sure how you could do it, but you're good at making motions, so I'll leave that aspect of it up to you. To propose a motion that would incorporate changes to be passed on to staff?
Bring board for review.
And based on that, come back to the board for a final vote?
No, just some amendments to move forward, a recommendation.
So you'd want, you'd want a planning board endorsement without seeing what they are, but?
Well, telling, well, I have written down what my suggested amendments are.
Or going through them in more detail.
At this point, I feel as though we've gone through a lot of legwork, and to have one more meeting to ensure that we go through it line by line and have a lot more confidence in what we're recommending doesn't seem out of the question or out of the realm of realistic possibilities. And I understand the motivation and the rationale behind councilor's position, but good enough is not the same as, as competence. And so hopefully, we can satisfy all of those question marks through one more meeting, push it forward with what we think is a bringing endorsement, and feel really happy about it and satisfied.
Before you make your motion, just anything?
No, I just was going to say, I don't think we're ever going to make everyone all happy.
No, by no means.
That's just, it's the fact of the matter. You can't make everyone happy. Some people don't want these to be permitted by use or administrative approval, and I can tell you that city council is never going to approve something that doesn't have some as permitted use. I just, I've heard it over and over again. That was actually what we were tasked to come up with, and so that's one of the things that is just not, I don't think it's going to be feasible to get through on the other end, so.
Yeah, I can certainly see your position, and I empathize with that, as you're the one that has really stewarded this. But as we sit here and go through certain changes, to me, the way that the chairman has presented going through line by line, although it's one more meeting and some more time, that will ultimately give the balance of where everyone is standing and thinking about each line item. And by the end of that meeting, I think that it'll be fairly clear where we can go from there, and people will feel a lot more heard, more than anything.
Okay. And then Cory?
I just had a quick question. So I just wanted to ascertain that, that meeting would be a public meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess my question was on that. Do we then have to, so it'd basically be, do you see it being a work, work session of the public hearing or something of that nature, and then voting on it to move it to council on the 16th next month? Or, because I don't know about, I was just wondering about public notice and all that
I just brought up the statute to try to look and see what we might need to do in terms of, the public hearing is still open, so it hasn't been closed. If the board or a quorum of the board was willing to do this, then it'd be a public meeting at which a vote could be taken at the end of that meeting to advance it to council, or it would come back to the full board if it was just a workshop, smaller group. My preference would be to see at least a quorum to get through this, you know, rather than, you know, this paragraph, that paragraph, and just be able to sit closer to Nick so we can have a conversation and, you know, get these final comments. And here, we've got a number of comments from the public tonight, too. I don't think anything, these things are hard, and I think, picking up what Beth said, I think there is possibility that there can certainly be administrative approval of some things. I think it might, we need to talk about that a little bit more, I think. That's just me.
So this meeting that we speak of, it would be dedicated specifically to this topic, correct? It wouldn't be, we wouldn't have any other items on the agenda?
I had planned a meeting next week to talk about something else, but that gets bumped off the table for this.
I mean, we, we joked tonight about, you know, wanting to be brief, and we asked Nick to be brief, but the fact of the matter is, we keep pushing him to the end of meetings, and we're all tired. And so if, in order for that meeting to be successful, we'd, we'd get the information well in advance, and we would all really do our homework and go through that individually and understand it fully, but we, I mean, understand our questions fully. And so we're not hearing things for the first time here and generate, you know.
Yes, but I think it's also not going to be, we're not going to be given a final copy. I think there'll be some edits happening at the meeting, so.
Exactly. Then I think the meeting would be useful if that, if that's how it, if it happens.
That's, that's exactly what I was thinking. But thank you for mentioning that and clarifying it.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, the meeting you have in mind is a week from today?
We have this room next week.
So next Thursday?
Yes.
And how, how far in advance do you think would be reasonable to get the documents they're going to be reviewing?
Nick is saying Tuesday.
I was going to say Monday.
Monday's a holiday, so if you go this route, how about I get you whatever the revised presentation is, and that, that's just the presentation. You did have the ordinance in advance at tonight. I'll get you the revised ordinance and whatever presentation material would go with it 48 hours before your meeting.
Sounds reasonable.
That's end of business Tuesday then, right?
Everybody agree with that? Yes, Jane?
Yeah, I guess I would just ask that that actually does include clarity about lot size. I thought that was a really good comment. I, it's not, it's not a comment that I can answer, even having read this document. So I just want to get more clarity about lot size. I think the extra meeting is a good idea, but having said that, in all transparency, I'm actually traveling next week, so I will not be here for the, for that meeting. And I don't know if that, you know, looking at quorum, getting a quorum, et cetera.
You could provide your comments if you're able to see them.
I really feel like my comments have been heard, though, also tonight, so on a positive note.
There will be another draft, and this is, this is unlike a regular application. You can provide your comments.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Is that our plan? We continue this to next Thursday? Or, I'm sorry, you wish to make a motion?
I've been up. I don't even think I'd get a second, so.
Make a motion and then continue to the next meeting?
No, to next week, and we take a vote at that meeting. That's what I want. If we can't take a vote at that meeting, I'm completely against doing this.
That's the goal. So we have a motion to continue the public hearing and our workshop to next Thursday?
I'll second.
At 7:00 in this room, is that correct?
And have Nick's presentation provided to us?
Two days in advance.
About the one from tonight, too.
There'll be a new one?
He knows. It'll be fixed.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
And let's hope it is the last discussion on this topic. The land use, is there somebody here to present that, or we just?
No. Right, the, the next item is the 325 Little Harbor Road Updated Land Management Plan. This is just for your information, as it was a condition of approval that any updates be provided to the planning board, so it's just, you know, for your information.
I'm going to go really quickly through the last few things here. The only update I'll have loops into the master plan. I have a discussion with the mayor about the master plan. He's interested and excited to have us working on that. And I mentioned the idea of trying to get the high school students involved. He's interested in that, thought it was a great idea. Superintendent and I have traded phone calls. He's excited about it. He was a civics teacher, so he's, he's into it. We're meeting tomorrow to talk about it, to see how that might advance. So part of, and as the mayor said, it's not just students, and I'm completely in agreement with this. It's as many people, the most participation we can get, the better. So it's early in the process, but that's why I think it's important to have these conversations. The rules, if you folks have had a chance to go through them and have any comments, you can get them to me. The legal department wants to go through them, and they want to provide their input. They didn't want us to vote on them tonight, so let's not do anything with them tonight. But if you have any comments, give them to them, to me, whatever.
Can I make one? Can we request that they be reviewed by our legal department?
That's what they're doing.
Okay. Because I have questions as to whether or not everything that's in there is, we're allowed to do.
Yep, so that they're, it's in their hands.
Excellent. That's my only comment.
When do you need those five? Is there a deadline? When, when would you like the comments on, or whatever?
Well, we won't, it, it's, there's only one thing on the agenda next week, and those are not going to be on the agenda. So it'll be at our March meeting, so there's time. If there's nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. We good?
Good.
Meeting's adjourned.